Pursuant to Section 841411 of the Nebraska statute, notice that this meeting was given on November 7, 2014. Visitors may obtain a request to be heard form from staff for any presentation they may have for this meeting. In accordance with the policy, a request to be heard for must be submitted to the secretary within first five minutes of the board meeting in order to be heard at this meeting. Agenda items are subject to reordering at the discretion of the board president. Please attend the entire meeting to ensure you can hear all of the discussion. Pursuant to Section 1412, 841412 of the Nebraska statute, the public is hereby informed that a current copy of the Nebraska Open Meetings Act is posted on the board meeting room wall, on the north wall, sorry. Roll call, please.
Here.
Gadding.
Here.
America.
Present.
Scanlon.
Present.
Snow.
Underwood.
Here.
Vargas.
Here.
Wayne.
Present.
Williams.
Present.
Eight present. Snow.
Present.
Nine present.
It is not on our agenda, but we always start our meetings off with a pledge of allegiance and with it being Veterans Day, we especially need to do that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic where it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Moving on to D, we have one public comment. John A. Tate. If you could step up, please. You'll have five minutes. Mr. Ray will let you know when there's one minute left and will let you know when there is 30 seconds left. And please state your address, sorry.
Native American, which net don't come.
Can you move the, yeah, move the mic, or you can move the mic over.
Okay, here we go now. I guess we're rolling now. There's something I have to do that my ancestors wouldn't, they'd think bad of me. So I'm gonna come around and shake y'all's hand. That's the first thing. I live at 8105 North 37th Street, Omaha, right down from Florence Elementary School, which school. I'm here today because some of my relatives came up to me. I'm a Klan leader. Which net don't, which means Lightning Klan. And as a Klan leader, I have obligations, like when I went into the service. You take this oath. So, here I am today. You know, Indian people's been trying a long time, ever since the creation of the colonies, to have an equal footing in this world, in this country. They say that Columbus discovered America. No, he just kinda wobbled around and he found us. But in doing that, a lot of tribes were rubbed out, died off because of disease and pestilence. That was brought over from Europe. Indian peoples, they said, down there tried real hard to help these guys. They really didn't want it. They were very, they were very up with theirself. Thought they knew everything, didn't know nothing. They say when that Spanish guy came into Florida, same thing happened. They was looking for mazesca, gold, money. And here we are now in the 21st century, and we still have this same friction between the Indian community and the United States of America and even the Omaha government. You know, Indian people were proud. We don't ask for help. We make it on our own. But when you have children come home and they ask their parents, they say, "Mama, Daddy, did Columbus help us Indians?" No. But yet they're told yes in the classroom. The whole truth ain't being told. And that's where the dilemma is. That's where the problem is. When I was on the PONCA Council as the vice chairman in 96, I served eight years. I served another four years after that eight, which made a total of 12 years on the Commission of Indian Affairs. I have a master's degree in mathematics, don't use it. Just had a heart attack four, five weeks ago, and I called it the Widowmaker. So I had to get a double bypass, they said. So I figured, Konkashla, God has got me here for a reason. But it still, it dumbfounds me that in this century, the century of the future, that we still have these problems with the truth not being told straight, not being told accurate. I don't speak English too well. I probably French say a lot better.
One minute.
So in this, I'm gonna ask you, as the board, to look into ways that we can bridge this gap and get the right things taught in the elementary, your middle, what we used to call junior high, and high school. This is what I came up to talk about. I didn't come up here to blame nobody. I did not come up here to get mad.
30 seconds.
So with this, I thank yous for allowing me to speak here. And I hope that in the future, we can have something that's a little bit more solid base than what we have now with the Indian community.
Uh-huh. Thank you. I'm gonna say this name wrong. Carmelita? If you could state your name, first name and last name, spelling every last name and your address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name's Carmelita Inugis. I reside at 1735 and a half, South 15th, here in Omaha. My children attend Castellart, Castellart Elementary. And the biggest concern to me is, my daughter came home yesterday and she had a concern with the curriculum that you guys are allowing to be taught. They're saying that, you know, they're sitting there showing that my, showing my daughter that Christopher Columbus, you know, he showed, he, you know, discovered America. But in all reality, why is that happening when we all know the truth here? Why are we gonna teach our kids lies? Why are we gonna sit there and, you know, we're lying to these kids? When these kids look up to this education and to these teachers, we're teaching them lies. Just teach the, teach the truth. My kid, my daughter knows, my daughter knows the truth and it bothers her. She said, "All these other kids, they don't understand." That my kids have the, are fortunate to sit there and be able to have me teach them at home the truth, but all these other Native American kids and all these other kids are being lied to. They don't, maybe they don't have the parents who know the truth. Our culture is being wiped out. Nobody's sitting, you know, through this education, our educa, our culture is being wiped out because we're not teaching the truth. We need to sit there and be able to, what? Let them know what happened. What, what did Christopher Columbus really do? He sat there and he, we were already here. My ancestors were here already. We sat, what did he do? He killed us. It was a whole, we're propaganda, propaganda, you know, showing like propaganda towards, you know, genocide and murderers. Is that what we do in the school? Because it doesn't make any sense. Are we gonna sit there and glorify Hitler? You see? 'Cause we teach the truth on what Hitler did. So why can't we not teach the truth on what Christopher Columbus did? He enslaved the Native Americans. He sat there and what did he else? He raped and killed. He would use babies as shooting targets. Maybe some of you didn't know, but in all reality, why aren't we teaching the truth? We don't have to sit there and get completely graphic because some kids can't under, can't take that, but teach the truth. Or, or maybe another thing? Why don't we sit there and get more Indian education throughout the schools instead of just at Liberty? Why don't we sit there and start these up? Why can't that be a, an option? There are, there is a huge Native American population here in the city. I'm not from around here, but I see. They need to be taught who they really are, 'cause some of them don't have the parents at home to teach them. I teach my kids. My kids and myself and their family just did a presentation at the school at Castellart for three different classes. And you know what those classes were saying? The third grade class was asking their teacher, "Please, we wanna know about more indigenous people. So why aren't we gonna give it to them?" That's my question. Why can't we sit there and open more of that? These kids want to learn the reality of what is the truth. We don't wanna hear lies. We don't need our kids to come home and ask these, you know? Let this, let this happen at school where they're being taught the truth. That's what I feel. And that's what I, I'm gonna sit there and stand up at this. And I'm gonna come at every board meeting and tell something gets changed or something is done. Because this is disickening. We all know the truth. Why can't we sit there and do that? I mean, should we sit there and glorify every, you know, Adolf Hitler, you know, Christopher Columbus? Look at all these other states also. A lot of the Christopher Columbus Day, what is it getting changed to? Indigenous Day. We're all indigenous throughout here. We're all indigenous. Even here in the school board, there's a lot of indigenous people, so why don't we sit there and teach these kids about that? Teach them to be proud of who they are.
One minute.
This is my whole concern. Let's stop lying to these kids and show the reality of who we really are. To be proud, to know the whole roots of who and where they come from. That's gonna help them in their future instead of being lied to for the rest of their lives until they're into college and hear the truth, and then they're gonna be like, "Man, that teacher lied to me. My parents lied to me. My government lied to me." Sit there and open up, open up the truth and, you know, show them, so then there won't be any more concern. Why don't, think about that. And I guarantee you, you're gonna sit there and see me every single board meeting until something happens. I promise you that one. I have to stand up for my kids and for the other Native American children who are going through this and who are being taught this. So thank you for hearing me out and we'll see you next board meeting.
Thank you. Next we have Harry Mitchell. Please state your name, spelling every last name and address, and you'll have five minutes. And Mr. Ray will let you know when there's a minute left and when there's 30 seconds. Thank you.
My name is Harry Mitchell, M.I.T.C.H.E.L.L. I live here in Omaha. I'm here on my way to South Dakota. I live out of state, but I was here with Chantay teens, Usong Heart Warrior Society, and we were bringing, we stopped today and we went up to the school with Carmelita today, I did, and we had a meeting with the vice principal. And the problem is, in this society, this white society that's been around here, is that it's destroying indigenous people. It has been for 522 years since Columbus landed here, when he got lost on his way to India. And it's a failure. And we went in and talked with this vice principal and she blamed it on you guys. She said, "You guys are the ones that passed the curriculum." You know, and Susanna, when she came home, she was upset 'cause she knows the truth about Columbus. You know, and by the school board, you're all obviously educated and probably college graduates. So you know when you went to college, you found out the truth about Columbus. So why are you guys propagating the lie of this American system by teaching these children a lie? You know, when they get older, they're gonna find out the truth. You know, when they go to college or they high school, they're gonna be learning something different, you know? And at Castellart Elementary, when we were there last week for this cultural event, 90% of those students are indigenous. You know, they're either Mexica, native, or something of that matter, you know? Or even, even the African children that are there, they suffered the same genocide that Columbus perpetuated upon indigenous people in this hemisphere, you know? And it's kinda the shame that a school board would pass a curriculum like that, you know, that would teach a lie and continue to propagate this, this lie of the American system. Because white society in the American system, this government's failed indigenous people for 522 years. And by passing a curriculum like this, you're still failing. You know, the indigenous community, they have no voice, you know? And people just brush this aside, you know? And it's, it's time for a change. You know, if they were teaching something like, you know, even like Carmelita was sharing about Hitler, you know, if they were teaching something about Hitler that was opposite, you know, there would be an outcry. People would be all over the place and on it. The news would be there, the media would be there. You know, and it's a shame that indigenous people are swept under the rug. You know, for 522 years we've been fighting, we're still here. You know, we're not going anywhere. You know, it's time to stand up and recognize the lie and start telling the truth. You know, and it can start here at this little level, you know, with the elementary stu, school students. You know, get, let them think outside the box. Show them something different. You know, they teach college students that, high school students that critically think. Why not start that at the elementary age? Show them the truth. Let them process it and see how they can change. You know, 'cause they're our future. And if we keep lying to them, when they grow up, they're gonna be bitter, they're gonna be angry, and they're gonna blame you guys. You guys are the ones that passed this curriculum. You know, and it's, it's just something to look into, you know? And, you know, Title I of Indian Education's out there all over the country. It's a federal program. There's funding for it, especially when there's large indigenous populations. When we were speaking at the school, Chanupa asked one of the teachers, you know, "Are you teaching anything about indigenous culture?" She's like, "No, nothing. Nothing's taught to those students about indigenous people." That's, that's a shame. You know, especially when most of them are indigenous. You know, you know, they have a little powwow thing going on there, and that's all they think about when you think about, and ask them about what's an Indian, think about powwow and dressing up, and that's it. You know, but some are, they live this every day. You know, it's a hard life to live. It's not easy when you're a minority, just a small percentage of the population. You know, that genocide that Columbus started, it's still going on today in the education system, in the hospitals, in the government.
One minute.
You look at any of these reservations around here, it's the highest poverty in the world. You know, some of these, like Pine Ridge, there's more poverty in Pine Ridge just north of here than there is in Haiti. You know, so it's time that we change. You know, we gotta look at things and we gotta, we gotta step this up. You know, and it starts right here. You know, and if you guys can't do it, then like, you know, we'll keep coming back, we'll keep coming back like Carmelita said, you know, until something changes. Because these kids deserve better than that.
30 seconds.
They deserve better to be lied to. You know, we all, they have that trust and honor and integrity on top of the door, but they're lying to them. So they don't even believe in what they got on that door. That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Next we have Jordan. Please state your name, last name, address, and you'll have five minutes.
My name's Jordan Menard, J.O.R.D.A.N.M.E.N.A.R.D., 7110 South 76th Street, Vista. I had not really planned on speaking about anything that was just talked about, but I was reminded of how angry I was at my parents for keeping truth from me when I was small and how different ways that I tried to get back at them because they kept truth from me, because they weren't willing to tell me what really happened with certain things. I think they were doing it to protect me, but what that really did was just enrage me. You know, I think that picking and choosing which culture to educate children on is a pretty, a pretty lousy thing. I don't think that, I don't think that this is something that we should pick and choose on, especially when it has to do with a horrific truth. Mass genocide of certain people, certain cultures, you know, continued through today. You know, and there was millions and millions of Native Americans when Columbus came. You know, it's only a few hundred years later where the count for live, full-blooded Native Americans can probably be picked down to a couple of million, you know, if that. I think, I think that especially educating the Native, Native American children, schools where native, population of Native American children are concentrated, that should be, that should be a priority. You know, if, if white America was not educated about anything about what happened between England, France, and the Americas, you know, me as a white American, knowing nothing about Native Americans, would probably not really know anything about, about my, my own culture. I wouldn't know how we were able to take control of these lands, you know, rightfully, unrightfully. I wouldn't know where I came from in Europe. I wouldn't know how I got here. I wouldn't know how my ancestors got here. I was fortunate enough to be educated in, in that, you know? And I think the same fortune should be bestowed upon the children, you know, grandchildren, great-great-grandchildren of people that were here before my people were. You know, I hadn't really had a chance to go through any of this, you know, in my mind, but Article IX is definitely something that I'm gonna check into. I think that, I think that educating little by little on something like this is not really something that's gonna work either. I think that it needs a truth about Thanksgiving, a truth about Columbus Day.
One minute.
Instead of exonerating somebody who really, and I think we all can agree, that doesn't deserve to be exonerated, you know, because there is really no discovery. You know, there were people living here. How am I gonna go into your house and say, "Oh, dang, I found this remote control. I found it. It's mine now." You know, that doesn't make any sense.
30 seconds.
That doesn't make any sense to, to, to elementary school kids. These kids are, are learning what we're be, what we're teaching them, and it's, it's not clicking because it's not the truth. That's all I have.
The next one, I wanna say Campania? I might be saying it wrong. I can't read the cursive, sorry. Sorry, I do apologize.
First of all, my name is Chanupa Gulahamani. I wanna give you one of my business cards, sir. Maybe we can work together, 'cause you leave me a tremendous problem that I see. My name is spelt C.A.N.U.P.A. It's an indigenous name that I was born and bred with on the Pine Ridge Indian Reservation back in 1959. But I'm here to kinda, you know, expand and elaborate on the education system that's been brand new to my people and many others in my country. And so when I look back at that and I listen to all these inquiries that, you know, indigenous people are presenting, even a Caucasian young man, it goes back to the time when the education system was forced upon people. And we're talking about the 3rd century AD, when the Holy Roman Catholic version of education was enforced on people of color. I don't care if it was Hindu, Islam, Jewish, Christianity, Native, it doesn't matter. They use this education system to separate the individuals by age, by age. So in reality, that promoted one unhealthy predicament in understanding the nature of said children that were to obtain a learning experience. It eliminate their purpose to understand the most common respect about identity, that human relationship with one another. And so now everyone is marching around like Pavlov's dogs to the bell. And they forget one thing. Cultural people had language, right or wrong. That's right. So how many in the education fields of the schools still promote that language? Well, for me, my first education was Lakota, okay? And this is what I'm gonna say to all of you. Okay, does anyone know what I said in my first language? Which is my education. You see, that's sad. It's gonna happen like that. So when children are being brought to present something about oral history, I am oral history. Without me, you're gonna go to a grocery store and on your shelves, you're gonna purchase a box of lifting chocolate-favored hot chocolate. And the only way you can dissolve it is by adding hot water. And what do you think you're gonna get out of it? A colored beverage. That's watered down, correct? Well, that's what's happening with society and education today. So I'm here on this mission because when I hear my people on this verge in this, you know, good vicinity of Omaha, I thought maybe the majority of the indigenous people would be packed in here to talk about these concerns and issues. And so when that Holy Roman Catholic version of education starts to affect you and your children because you done nothing to fix it and change it, then kiss me goodbye. Because not only have you offended me, but you also offended your own children. And that's how you make a long story short about education. Thank you.
Thank you. I have your business card, and I have contact information for other people, and district staff will be following up with you and probably some other folks who have talked to resolve some of this matter. We don't, during public comment, have back and forth, but we do let people know, we will take their comments seriously and we will follow up with folks and hopefully resolve some of the concerns you may have had. Moving on to E1A Osers. Board of Trustees. Mr. Smith?
The Board of Trustees established an ad hoc committee to attempt to put together a process for allowing for a new business trustee to be added to the board, because there is one business trustee who's asked to, who, he's retiring in his business career, and he's asked to also step down from the Board of Trustees because of his retirement. So this process that you have before you is the process that was put together in conjunction with Mr. Ray's efforts, as well as in the ad hoc committee, which incorporated Ms. Fay as well. And if you have questions about the process, I will do my best to attempt to address them. I was not on that ad hoc committee, but I'll be willing to address questions. Ms. Fay was on the committee, so she would likewise be able to address questions.
Mr. Scanlon.
I guess we have, correct me if I'm wrong, we have one member from the business community that's on the OSERS committee.
There are two business community members by statute who are on the trustees.
And is there any reason that we don't have more, that maybe from different financial backgrounds, or just something that we get a broader view from, or view of opinions, I should say, from more business-oriented folks?
That's what's laid out in state statute. The statute specifies who is on the Board of Trustees by position. Statute has authorized two business community members.
Is there anything preventing us from going above and beyond state statute?
I believe so. The state statute specifies who the Board of Trustees will be, so to change that would be a matter of going to the legislature with legislation to change that configuration.
I just, I, I, I think I understand your question. I would submit that as long as they're not voting members, you could have as many people you want in the room. The fact of the matter is, is we have advisors who are in the room giving us advice, and our members vote on it. Having other non-voting committee members, I don't think is, is a, I don't think you run a file of statute. I think the statute sets a limit, but as long as they're not voting members, that's just my reading of the statute. We can get a legal interpretation and get back to you on that, for sure.
Yeah, the meetings are open meetings, so anybody is more than welcome to attend, yes.
I realize they're open, but a lot of people, if they don't have kind of an invitation to come and, and present, or not present, but to sit on and, and provide their, their guidance, I don't think you're gonna get some people that'll come from business community. I see, Marion, you have a hand raised. I, I guess, I just wanna know how we can get more input. Maybe they're not voting members, but we have different financial sectors. We just have a lot more people that are highly qualified in the investment community come and attend.
Mrs. Fay.
So you, you could potentially use the same process to have non-voting members if that was the direction that the, that the board wanted to go, and after consulting with, maybe with legal counsels to make sure that that would, is a correct application of the statute. But the process that we worked out in the ad hoc committee and then presented to OSERS last Wednesday, which was voted on by all of the trustees and is advanced to you all today, basically outlines a collaborative process between the trustees and the Board of Education, where there would be an open application, which would be run out of the Board of Education office rather than out of the retirement office. And those applications would be available, however people wanted to promote them. If you wanted to promote them yourself, through the member groups, on the district HR website, however we wanted to promote the application, it would be available online and run through the Board of Education office. And then the qualified applicants would be interviewed at the trustees' meeting. And even though it is an open meeting, we would make sure that the entire Board of Education knew that we were going to have this interview process happening during a trustees' meeting, which would require some additional notification on our part to make sure that we had all of the, the proper public notice given about having potentially a quorum of board members at that meeting. And Board of Ed members could ask as many questions as they want to at that trustees' meeting. The trustees would then vote to recommend one of those people being interviewed out of that meeting. And at that time, board members could decide, I suppose, between the OSERS meeting and the next board meeting, whether or not they wanted to further interview any of the candidates, have a second interview in public, which would be another public meeting, or, you know, what, if they were comfortable with the recommendation that came out of OSERS. So this process currently is just for this business position. We're still working on some sort of process for the other positions, but we don't have any openings currently. And there's a lot more work to do, but this is what we've agreed on as a Board of Trustees for this one position. I know Luann has a couple of edits that are just technical edits, but I think that Mark and Luann and I, I don't mean to speak for you, but I think we're pretty comfortable with this as a starting point and for this one open position. But in answer to your question, I think once we got some legal advice about the position, the recommendation that Justin made, there's no reason you couldn't use the same application to add some non-voting members.
Mr. Scanlon.
I'd just like to thank you guys for increasing transparency, and it's obviously gonna become a very major topic as the, as the unfunded liability continues at this time to, to grow, that we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to oversee it. And I appreciate that you guys are taking this very seriously, obviously, and trying to increase the transparency of who's on the OSERS board and everything, so thank you for that.
Before we do the technical edits, we'll have to entertain a motion for approval, and then, or we can do the technical edits now, I guess, and then do a motion with the technical edits.
Under qualifications for the businessperson positions as an OSERS trustee, under the second bullet point, I think, and this is just to get rid of a few propositional phrases, I think it, it might read well to say, da-da-da, should have at least ten years of management experience in a public or private organization. And just kinda clean up a little bit of that wording. And then, one of the things that I noted at the end of that second bullet point is the, where it says five years of experience in the field of actuarial analysis or the administration of an employee benefit plan. I think one of the things that's really happened and probably started, I don't know, twenty-five years ago, was the move from defined benefit to defined contribution plans. And so I'm thinking maybe it would be a good idea to add the words "or institutional investment experience," just to make sure that there's some opportunity for someone who's an institutional investor to also be included, and not just someone who's been involved in a benefit plan. That might, I think we want a broad base of experience in this position and not something really narrow. I think in the third underlined area where it says candidates for the positions of OSER trustee, I think it should say must instead of should. That's just, it's, it says candidate for the position, I, I think they should have those or must have those. Under OSERS participation in term of office, under the second bullet point, I would strike, because I think it's confusing language, as Marion already mentioned, this was developed for the business position. So that second line where it says OSERS trustee shall serve until a successor is appointed, I think it's, I, I'm not sure it's necessary in there, and, and it kinda confuses the point, especially when the previous line talks about terms of the three fiscal years. So I think that should be struck. Pardon?
That last one's in statute. So even after three, three years, that person had, is still appointed until that successor is, so I think it's just the statute. So if I was a person applying, the statute reads that, I would wanted to say that, just my opinion.
I guess I was thinking that, you know, at the end of three years, there may be a situation where it's a different board, and the Board of Education really appoints the folks, so they may say, that board may say, you know what, instead of appointing automatically, we wanna open it back up again for discussion. And so I, I guess, I just saw it as, you know, it's appointed for a three-year term period, but that's certainly discussable. And then I think under the red, there's just a few words missing in the second line. I think it should read, "will be provided the applicant information and shall be reviewed" instead of just review. I think it needs a few extra words.
And that portion of it is just process. It's not on the application, so understandable.
But I thought for correct English. And then I think in the seconds of the last line, it should read, "The Board of Education may hold additional interviews." And in the third line, "Members of the Board of Education will be invited," just present tense versus past, kind of a, or a potential, because I think that's what we wanna say will happen. So those were just some things that I noted. I think that this is a great step forward from the trustees and gives us the opportunity to be really transparent and give business folks the opportunity to be a part of the process.
I'll entertain a motion to approve either as presented before us or with edits, whichever motion somebody wants to make.
I'd like to motion for with the edits. I know Luann, the one that I think we probably need to clarify is that with the three-year, that was the only one that I saw that, trying to clarify that one a little bit more, that otherwise it, it could be construed that somebody could be in that position for a very long time, as long as somebody else is not put into that position or elected in that, yeah, the OSERS participation in term office, that, that's the only one that I had a concern with, but I would make a motion with Luann's suggestions, except for that, or we'd have to work on that, "OSERS trustees shall serve until a successor is appointed." That's very likely.
Is there motion on the floor to approve the OSERS retirement Board of Trustee application for the businessperson interested in serving on the OSERS trustee with the oral edits that were given by Mrs. Cottin?
Second.
Motion on the floor by Mr. Scanlon, second by Mrs. Cottin. Any discussion? I will renew my concern of striking that out. One, I think this was a, a committee process which the OSER signed off on this, and so even though it's a small change, it is a change to what was approved by them. And I think as we continue to build our relationship and trust among retirees and everybody else on the OSER board, I would just leave it as is for this particular application. Instead of striking things, because if next time goes around, they'll say, "What changes are you gonna make at the board level again?" And that may damage the process. All right, Mrs. Cottin.
I guess it's really the Board of Education's responsibility to appoint. So I, I just thought it was a confusing line, and I would be okay, at one point I put, "OSERS trustee shall serve until successor is, or be appointed by the Board of Education according to state statute." I think it's a little confusing because the business folks are three-year, and everybody else is one-year, and since this is focused on the business piece, I guess I wanna make sure that any future Board of Education knows that we didn't appoint forever, that it was an appointment, and that each person applying knows they were appointed for that three-year process. And that was all I was trying to clarify, based on state statute.
Any more discussion?
Is it something we should, before we vote, we should get some advice from legal counsel on this, or is it not? Just because I wanna clarify, I'm, I'm not sure we're all reading it the, the same way, so I'm not.
Mrs. Neesbro.
I didn't catch all of that last part, so if you could just bring me up to speed one more time, I would appreciate it.
So the line currently reads, "Businessperson trustee shall be appointed for terms of three fiscal years, period."
Okay.
And, and that's what we're really focused on here, is the businessperson. And then there's a line that reads, "OSERS trustee shall serve until a successor is appointed." And so we're just trying to get clarification on making sure that we all end up reading that the same way, and that it...
That is in the statute, I believe?
Right.
That piece to it?
So at one point I had written, you know, would it be appropriate to say, "be appointed by the Board of Education according to state statute," or just make it clear that it's state statute that drives that, so when someone is reading this application process, they understand where it came from.
I, I think it would be important that you could have additional information in there to know that according to the statutory obligations to serve on the OSERS board, that you could have additional language in there that says, you know, you have to serve until a successor is appointed, according to the language of statute. It's not requirement on behalf of the district, because you could require that on behalf of the district as well, if you wanted to have a policy and say, "That's the policy of Omaha Public Schools." So I do think there is a distinction between a policy and a state statute. You know, you're required by state statute to do it, or as a board, you can require them by policy to do it. So I think it depends, you know, as to how you, you want to word that.
So I think I'm hearing you say it's both. It's this wording, "OSERS trustee shall serve until a successor is appointed as required by state statute," as opposed to one or the other? Is that what you're hearing?
It is what I'm hearing, and it's what I originally wrote down in my notes.
Oh, okay.
So that makes sense, because I just wanted that wording in there as required by state statute. I had the words, "according to state statute," but I just think that clarification might be helpful.
Okay.
Is that okay?
"OSERS trustee shall serve until a successor is appointed as required by state statute." That's an accurate statement?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay, that's perfect.
Matt, are you okay with that since it's your motion?
Just as long as the trustee's okay with it.
Any other discussion? Mr. Ray, you have the correct motion with the edits and the correct edit?
I believe so, yes.
Any other discussion? Seeing under roll call, please.
Fay.
Aye.
Cottin.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Einai.
Motion carries. Moving on to I-1-B, Community Partnership Proposal.
Kennedy. What are you on?
Process.
Oh, the process, yeah. Welcome.
President Wayne, members of the Board of Education, Superintendent Evans, before you this evening is a new policy that's proposed to sort of define the process by which Omaha Public Schools enters into community proposals. And so before you this evening, we've kind of, we will eventually go through what I would call the community policies that are not, haven't been in front of the board yet, but because we've been having different community proposals in front of the Board of Education, there's been several requests to have some sort of defined process, and so I've sort of fit this in as 1401 that will be coming before you at a later time. So under this 1,000 series. So let's walk through kind of the proposal in front of you this evening. So basically, with community partnerships, we have lots of opportunity at Omaha Public Schools to partner with the community, and so we kinda wanted to define a process by someone who would be interested in having a partnership with the district, how that process would work. So basically, individuals or organizations seeking to enter into those partnerships as defined at the end of the policy with OPS must submit... defined at the end of the policy with OPS must submit a letter of interest to the superintendent describing the proposed community partnership in no more than five pages. So it's sort of quick, you know, "We're interested in doing something with OPS, here's a general piece to say, you know, how does this proposed partnership benefit OPS? What are the intended outcomes, and how will the partnership achieve them? How will the outcomes be measured? Why is the partnership important to pursue at this time? What qualification does the organization bring to the proposed project? What's the total cost of the proposed project? What amount do you seek from OPS and for what period of time? What resources, if any, will other funders or organizations provide? And what are the future costs to OPS?" The superintendent then will review that letter of interest. Should the superintendent take no action, the letter of interest shall be deemed rejected. Should the superintendent determine that that letter of interest merits further review, the superintendent shall submit the letter of interest to the board for their consideration. The board then can have that applicant basically submit a more formal, a lot larger proposal to the Omaha Public Schools, so it can be considered by the board. And it kind of goes through, you know, what a community partnership proposal, which is much more formal, would look like, so that the board has more information through that consideration, rather than this sort of first piece where, you know, these basic questions are addressed. On the second page, you can continue to see sort of what that formal proposal looks like in that process, and it helps clearly define who's reviewing the LOIs and how community partnership proposals come in front of the Board of Education. For the purposes of the policy, I think it's important to look at the definition at the end. "A community partnership shall mean any project or program conducted for the benefit of students of OPS or on the premises of OPS, which is funded in wholer part by any individual or organization, which individuals, organizations, or OPS combined expenditure will exceed more than $100,000." So we're trying to not make this too broad, but yet capture all of those community partnerships, and so, you know, that, you know, may be an area where we can define it further, but I think that that is a really good start to sort of say, how do you get interested? How do you come and present something to the board? And it gives everybody an opportunity to sort of see these partnerships in more detail when they rise to the board level after they have been reviewed by the superintendent. So that's the partnership in front of you, the policy for partnerships in front of you this evening, since we're coming up through a bond, and we're going to have, I'm sure, a lot of community partnerships in this, and I think this will be a good policy to have in place as soon as possible.
Mr. Snow.
Thank you. I just had one quick question. So if I'm correct, this gets sent to the superintendent, and then the superintendent will determine if they want to bring it in front of the board?
Correct.
Is there any language in here that requires the superintendent to at least let us know who sent him a letter of intent?
It was first proposed that it would go, the short letter would go to the board, but through discussion with the officers, we changed that to the superintendent. But if we need language just to let the board know what's going on, we can certainly add a sentence like that, so that you're just aware that those, you know, five-page proposals have been submitted.
I think for the superintendent and the board, and that transparency.
Sure.
To actually have that language in there, just for the board to know who's all been contacting, who's been wanting a partnership, and why that partnership wasn't given, so there's no miscommunication.
Sure.
I don't know what my other colleagues think, but I think that could help both of us. I think that's too much.
Mr. Scanlon.
I was actually going to ask the same question, just kind of a, you know, how do we keep the board informed of LOIs that come in and that maybe the board officers and the superintendent know about, but the rest of the board does not know about? That is there a report or something that we can put wording in here that rejected LOIs or things that are tabled for ideas that at least everybody has the information that is needed, so when members of the community approach us, we can at least talk...
No word of attack.
Yeah, intelligently about why it was tabled or why it was rejected. So I would agree with Mark's concerns.
We can certainly add that.
Mrs. Faye.
I would agree with that as well, but I have another question that I would add to the required information in the LOI, and that is, does the partnership proposal require the adjustment or waiver of any current district policies or any current state statutes?
Okay. Would you know that?
Depending on how innovative the proposal is. It may require some of those things.
Any other comments or suggestions? I think what we'll do, if nobody makes a motion, we'll bring back the edited versions on the 17th and take it up at that time with those changes. So, Ms. America.
Sorry, we were trying to find something. I think either in the LOI or maybe in the full proposal, we're just double-checking to make sure we don't see it. Something about how does this align with the district strategic plan?
I saw when I read that that wasn't in there, so I guess we will include that.
Okay.
Yep. Thank you, Lacy.
Any other? So I'll do the awkward 10 seconds waiting for a motion that nobody will hear. Mr. Evans.
Thank you, President Wayne. It is a needed policy, however you want to change it and do some of the work you're doing to it, I think is fine, but I think to what we're going to be doing potentially with Boys and Girls Club if something should come up, I think to some of the things I've read in the paper that I don't think had LOIs, maybe some community partnerships to expand football stadiums, I'm not sure how those items in the past have come to the board. I don't think we had something like this where someone brought that to the board, or at least I don't think so. Now, I haven't been here that long, so maybe there's something I don't know, but I don't know how we've made those decisions in the past. This gives you some framework to make that decision. If there's a high school, for example, that's wanting to do a stadium, probably ought to go to the school board and say, "Here's kind of what we'd like to do, here's kind of what it looks like, and I have a chance to look at, board has a chance, and we can all ask those questions that are legitimate questions. What are the ongoing costs? What's the cost to actually do the construction?" Which doesn't mean they're not great projects. The Boys and Girls Club at Mount View, imagine most of you have seen that facility. It's a fantastic facility, serving young people in a great way. But that should have a process on how that community partnership is put together, and so I think this gives you some frameworks, and I appreciate Ms. Megan Neillis-Brosh bringing that to us, so thank you for that.
Mrs. Faye.
Not sure it needs to be in the policy, but I think on the backside, and Mark's comments made me think of this, that on the backside, there needs to be a standard set of questions that he's looking at when he reviews something like this, and that the board can reference as well, when they hear about an LOI through this report process or whatever it is, how does it fit with our strategic plan? What's the timeline? How would it fit if we were to accept this? How would it fit into our overall timeline for major projects and partnerships? Is it going to be possible for us to come up with general fund dollars once maybe outside funding has run out? I just think, you know, obviously I can't think of them all right here, and I don't know that it needs to be in policy, but I think I would like to know that for consistency, you know, and it was your comment about how we've done previous projects that made me think of it, for consistency and so that we know we're not overlooking anything, that there's just sort of a standard set of questions or points that we run everything through to pass the smell test, you know? Is it even possible? Because as you said, there's a lot of great projects and potential projects out there that maybe it's, maybe they're great, they're just not appropriate for right now, but they might be down the road. So I think I'd like to see that after this policy is passed. It would help me, as I'm evaluating things that I hear about as well.
Mrs. Gotti.
So do you mean, I'm just trying to understand, do you mean in addition to the set of questions that's listed, the LOI must address the following questions? Do you mean before that?
I mean, no, I'm thinking that this is something more that we would use to, or really that the superintendent would use to review an LOI, but I would like to know that all of these things are being looked at, so that you... I'm trying to provide maybe a more objective procedure for looking at a proposal, in addition to the subjective part that would come as it's talked over and you meet with partners and you hear, you know, so there's always going to be that subjective part, that this is a partner that we've worked really well with in the past, anticipate we'll work well with them again. But there needs to be an objective component where we can also say, "But I don't know how that's going to fit into our calendar in the next five years, because we can only tackle so many really big projects." Or, "I don't know how that's going to fit into our budget in the next three years, because we are committed to X, Y, and Z." So I think it's just a more objective piece that the superintendent can look at and the board, to make sure that before we sign on to anything, we've asked the same questions internally of every project. Does that make sense? I'm not asking them to provide any more information, I'm asking us to do a thorough job on the backside, really the superintendent, but I'd like to have that somewhat standardized, like a rubric. Thank you, Lacy. Like a rubric, right.
Which would tie with the set of questions that's asked? What amount do you see for what time period? Is that what... So the rubric would kind of go through, because they would respond to all those questions?
I'm thinking it's more of an internal thing. I think that you take the information that they give you and you run it through, just the way you use the rubric, and you run it through, I'm glad Lacy came up with that word, you run it through the rubric, and it's at least a prime, and maybe you go ahead with it anyway, because it's just too great an opportunity to pass up. You know, there's always that subjective part to it. But maybe you go, "We ran it through this, and as much as we'd like to, the time is not now because of these reasons." So I'm just asking for that, because I think if a project is turned down from the superintendent, it'll actually provide him with a tool to say, "And this is why. I know that we all are very enthusiastic about this, and we love working with this partner, but here's why I'm turning this one down now, because I ran it through this, and it's just not the right time right now." Rather than, "Well, I didn't think it, I didn't want it," you know? So I just think it provides a little structure and definition to the process for us.
Any other comments?
Again, I don't think it needs to be policy.
Any other comments or suggestions? Seeing none, we will move to Policy 8231, Internal Board Policy, Board Members' Miskalinas Expenditures. Mrs. Brosh.
It's magic. I recently did a presentation before you this evening, is Policy Number 8231 that you have previously passed, and I had recently done a presentation to OSERS board, and in looking at that, noticed that several of the changes that were discussed at the board table had not been made of the policy, so I want to ensure what we've passed is actually in there. And also, I was reviewing an OSERS policy, and on, I believe, I can't remember which page it's located on, I believe it's at the end, hold on. In red, "All expenses claimed should be submitted no later than 30 days after the expenses occurred." I thought that was a good suggestion that the previous OSER policy had had, and I thought it should be included in our policy, so I've tweaked our policy as well. So just based on that review, this is a policy in front of you to ensure that we have an accurate reflection, A, of what the discussion at the board table was that's passed and online, and then this additional language, so that we can ensure that all claims have been submitted 30 days after. So this is in front of you, is 8231. Again, if you have any questions, I'm happy to answer them.
Any questions or comments? I'll entertain a motion to approve Policy 8231 that is before us. It is simply kind of a cleanup.
Move approval.
It's a motion by Mrs. Underwood.
Second.
Second by Mrs. Fay. Any other discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Gotti.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Nine-Nine.
Motion carries. This is a policy, so it does require a second reading if we want it to be effective immediately. So I will entertain a motion to waive second reading of Policy 8231 that is before us.
I moved to waive the second reading of Policy 8231.
Motion to waive.
Second.
Motion by Ms. Under, sorry, motion by Ms. Williams, second by Mrs. Fay, to waive second reading of Policy 8231. This does require a two-third vote. Any discussion? Seeing none, roll call, please.
America.
Aye.
Scanlon.
Aye.
Snow.
Aye.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
Nine-Nine.
Motion carries. Moving to E1D, 75 North Project, Howard Kennedy Elementary School.
Excuse me.
Yes.
I'm wondering if we can talk about E1D and E1E together, since they're both action items, and I feel like one is dependent on the other? If it'd be possible to talk about them together before any action is recommended or taken?
Ms. Neillis-Brosh.
This thing, Graham? Yeah, well, right, I mean, they're really part and parcel of the...
Legally, you can, as long as they're both on the agenda, I would recommend that you do one motion first and one motion second, since they both require action, they're action items, but if you would like to talk about them together, I think that you can talk about them together. We also have notice on all of our agendas that items may be switched around, so please attend the entire meeting. So I do feel that legally, if you would like to talk to them together, you could, but I would recommend that any motions made are separate, and you do a motion for E1D first and motion for E1E second.
Thank you. So during the conversation, if we blur them, that'll be okay. I'll try to keep it organized as far as the conversation goes, but we'll make sure we do one motion, if any motion during this time, we'll make sure they're separate. Project 75 North, Dr. Project 75 North, Dr. Kerberg.
Mr. President, I'll jump in and start and then refer to Dr. Kerberg, since I had a chance to meet and talk with several of the staff that I see in front of us here tonight. Thanks for joining us. In our last board meeting, we had a, a discussion about just some thoughts, some pieces and parts of things that this board has looked at, and, and no decisions were made, but part of the conversations did include that 75 North community project area, and then Howard Kennedy, which is by proximity right next to it. And as a result of that, I was asked by the teachers and the principal to stop by the school, I believe it was the next day. A little emphatic, maybe, is that, is that, is that a correct adjective? A bit emphatic that I stopped by, so, so we stopped by and spent a couple hours together talking about what was discussed at the board table, which is all we did, which is part of that, that board conversation. And after that, we felt as staff that if we actually want to move towards an actual conversation with staff, parents, community, our teachers association, OEA, that we wanted to make sure that that's where the board wanted us to go, and that's basically what I shared with, I think that's what the Howard Kennedy staff would say, that I shared with them on that lengthy Tuesday morning meeting, trying to help understand that we're just looking at thoughts, pieces and parts of different programs and practices at schools that are in our district as well as others. For example, I mean, in our own district, we've got all kinds of options, inclusive of extended day, extended year, inclusive of dual language, inclusive of STEM and STEAM emphasis areas. Those are all pieces and parts that we were just talking about, no action had been taken. So, I shared that with that staff, but we wanted to come back to the school board and know from you definitively, do you want us to begin specifically working with all these stakeholders? Do you want us specifically to develop frameworks to come back to you, because it's still your recommendation on what you want to do with this school? It's your, at the end of the day, it's your school, and so you decide how you want that school to look, and that's why we have it as an agenda item, just to have clarity that, that you want us to engage staff, parents, community, and all the related stakeholders.
I'll open it up to discussion. Mr. Snow.
I just want the second part. Before we have discussion, I just wanted to, that's why I wanted them presented together.
Oh, so as far as it relates to the grant?
I'll start this off and refer to Dr. Kerberg. There is a, an SIG grant which allows, the state allows funding for schools that qualify. Kennedy is a qualifying school that would have the potential for that additional funding. There is a timeline for application, I believe it's a February deadline, as I recall, and it does have several components to it, but it would depend on what the board wanted, if the board wanted to do anything different at all. That would be the driver for SIG, if you want to do that, because there are some specific requirements of the SIG grant. I don't know, Dr. Kerberg, do you want to reference anything on that? I believe I'm right on the timeline on a February application deadline.
I could run through some of the requirements, it might be helpful just to get the background knowledge. I think our board officer saw this a year ago, so there's no way you would remember these, I'll just bring them back. The application's not currently available, so we don't know when it will be due. Last year, it was due February 24th. Typically, they run on a standard cycle, we're guessing it'll be about that time this year. The recommendation is that the district should identify schools by mid-October or November to start planning for that application, so that we're in a position to have teacher input and discussion, staff input, as well as district office input, in terms of planning for what would go into that application. The application isn't actually written by Title I staff, it's written by other district staff and building staff. That's who the application is put together. And the application is designed to focus on, let me see, I've got it right here, school improvement planning, restructuring, enhancement to support schools in raising student achievement. Kennedy is eligible. I would like to note, and I just mentioned this to Mrs. Brooks before the meeting started, Kennedy is a Gold Award-winning school. They have hit their targets for growth at 5%. They have done some excellent instruction and, and efforts in the school resulting in them getting that recognition. And then I would add, the state will interview two or more school personnel about their involvement in the application process, as well as two or more district personnel about their involvement in the application process. The state receives approximately, it varies year to year, based on last year, $2.5 million to be distributed to approved applicants. The state does the approval. Applying doesn't mean that the state will give it to you, it simply means request to apply. Tier one schools are the only ones that are available, eligible. Last year, we decided not to apply, we were tier two status, there was a different group of schools ahead of us that were tier one. This year, we have OPS schools that are tier one schools, according to No Child Left Behind. If you'd like, I can define what tier one means, if that's helpful.
How many schools and what are those schools?
There are a list of, I'll just.
I guess I don't need to know what names, but just how many?
I'll just, do you want names? Because I can provide those, it's.
No, I don't. What's the number?
For OPS, there are one, two, three, four, five, six, seven schools, and there is one that is not OPS. Last year, the award winners were one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight schools, none of them were OPS.
Mrs. Fay.
So, is the, is the SIG grant, that's redundant, right, a part of moving forward on the 75 North project? I mean, is it, could, could you do one without the other, or is it sort of moving forward contingent on applying for the grant as well?
I guess I'd say it depends on what the actual structure becomes. If, if you are doing something that requires additional funding, this gives you extra funding and provides you an avenue to capture that funding. So, I, I can't answer that till we know what it is.
What direction?
Right, but we wanted to show it as an option, if the school board said, we want to do X that costs a million dollars, whatever X is, because there are, there are lots of different samples that, I know the staff and I discussed the other day, I mean, there's a lot of ways to frame this piece.
So, I have just a couple other questions about the school improvement grants. So, if we have seven, are we not considering applying for any of those other six schools just for Howard Kennedy? Is that, and why would that be?
Sorry, I turned off my microphone. That would really be up to the board.
Right, but you're not bringing them, I mean, are you planning on bringing them to us? Are there some others that you're considering?
Yeah, we could, if the board was interested in that. Our concern was, if the board wanted to know, what is the possible revenue source to provide additional funds for 75 North? This would be one possibility for this particular school, but you could also say, no, let's apply for all seven schools and apply probably at a lesser amount. The grant award, there's a finite amount of dollars, last year it was 2.5 million. The more schools that apply, the lesser your grant award will be to each school. So, it affects the amount of dollars each school would receive, so you'd have to think about how much would you want to go to each school, or would you like to target in one school, based on what 75 North input from teachers and that plan is? Because if that plan ends up being costly, I can't say it will or won't be, you might prefer to say, let's have it focused on one school because the plan is so costly. If you say, no, we're not doing some of the things in the plan that are costly, and what's costly, extended day, extended school year, if you're not doing those things, well then, you could say, let's divide it between seven schools.
Okay.
And see what the state responds.
That's helpful. I have one more question, if that's okay. Can you talk about some of the things that have been done in other districts? I mean, what's your familiarity as things that have been done effectively through a school improvement grant in other districts?
Yeah.
Not just what's been done, because I know there's been all kinds of things done, but what, what maybe model you'd be following that has been effective?
Yeah. The State Department recommends two models, a transformative model, which would probably be the model we would recommend, which is deeply doing your core academic instructional strategies well, with great fidelity, and focus on those state reporting subjects as well as others, and making sure that you're attaining mastery by the manner in which you're teaching. There's also a turnaround model, which is an option for a school district to consider, which adjusts more things within that particular, and I can't speak to the specifics on the turnaround model, but I could come back and bring that to you, and we don't have to do either one of those models, those are just samples. We could create our own model or use a national framework, but I, I don't know the turnaround model as well from memory, so I don't want to speak to that.
But there's probably specific components that you have to have in a school improvement grant application, I'm assuming, that they're looking for, very.
Yeah, that, that is correct. What they have to see is that you've got targeted outcomes, and you've got a means by which you're going to measure those metrics. They're looking for specific data in terms of how you're going to implement it, what's happening each month to make those things happen, what are your specific research and evidence-based strategies that you're implementing? So, you can't do it anecdotally, you have to use research evidence-based strategies, you have to put it on a timeframe, you have to have targeted outcomes, and so all those components have to exist. And then there's great samples across the United States, I won't go into all of them, but if you read anybody from David Kerp and his work about changing schools, or you look at Robert Marzano, or Michael Fulon, or Doug Reeves, the last person I'll mention is Mike Schmoker, they've all got models by which you implement school improvement. And our district is already following a school improvement model, the difference is, this is much more intensive and much more accountable. And of course, anytime you take a state grant that's a title grant, there's regular auditing and a review process, just like we currently do, an audit every year with every principal for their title dollars. That's a requirement. The state comes and interviews them, actually in this room, so that's one of the requirements. So.
That's, that's helpful.
Any other questions?
I will add one more piece. It's not determined, it's currently a three-year grant, the school improvement grant, but there has been discussion at the state level about changing that to a five-year grant, but that is not confirmed, but we did look into that.
Mr. Vargas.
So, I'm really happy we're having this conversation, especially because, you know, I think there's been a lot of conversations. I'm thinking about the Omaha World Herald put out this article about all the schools, particularly OPS schools, that were on one to four-year plans for not meeting No Child Left Behind accountability, AYP, adequate yearly progress. So, and also because I have worked with schools, SIG grant schools, and some of the ones for turnaround, so just some for transformation and for turnaround. For transformation, I'm looking at the Nebraska Department of Ed, a component, if you're doing transformation, you, you need to have at least a certain number of these components, which would include replacing a principal who led the school prior to commencement of the transformation model, using rigorous, transparent, equitable evaluation systems for teachers and principals, taking into account data on student growth as defined, well, you need to define that, and making it a significant factor in, in addition to multiple observations and performance and ongoing professional practice. And then there's teacher and principal involvement, rewarding school leaders and staff, thinking about what that means. The reason why I bring it up, it sounds like, there's a lot there that I think we're taking on. I'm, I'm glad we're having the conversation, but I think we need to, for all those things to happen, even in an existing school in our district, I think, I want to learn more about how we can do that more comprehensively and create a plan for us, to do that with our schools. And to Ms. Fay's point, there are other schools that are on this, that we could potentially apply for. I think this is a great opportunity for us to create a plan around what does school improvement and school turnaround look like within OPS? How can we do that backwards plan it and do it right? How can we create that option, be transparent with our schools around what this looks like, what this means? What does it mean for the community? What does it mean for parents? How do we engage in that conversation? And then how everybody, equal choice to, to say that you want to opt into this, and then we work with them to do it. That's kind of where my mind is right now, I think, because for Kennedy, it sounds like there's obviously opportunity, and we have, we have, we have engagement through this organization, but that, we're not having the same conversation, or haven't had it with other schools that are also in need of, or could be improved much more and have not met AYP scores. And that for some of these things, which are big, replacing a principal, these evaluation systems, sides of student growth, things that we don't do yet, I want to figure out how to do those right with the right amount of time, before we dive into trying to do it with, with just one school and, you know, not think about a more sustainable plan.
Miss, any other, I know, Mrs. Underwood, follow, I'm not seeing Dr. Kerberg, but.
Do you want to talk to someone? Yeah, go ahead. Do you want me to go ahead and add?
All right.
Here's the great news. Since OPS is labeled as adequate yearly progress not met, we now have Elkhorn Gretna, award-winning, blue-ribbon schools in Papillion-Lavista. It's hit every school district in the learning community. And so, a waiver's being stopped by the State Department, and I think you probably know, Arne Duncan, our Secretary of Education, has publicly said, No Child Left Behind is a, and these are his words, a train wreck, because it's no longer a good law. And the reason it's not a good law is it's 100% proficient for every subgroup, so it'd be like a group of US senators going out golfing, and they all had to hit par on the same day at the same time, regardless of their ability or whether or not they got a golf cart. So, it, it's no longer something that is probably the best measure. However, until there is a waiver, and that's why the State Department's doing college and career-ready standards, we are left with these No Child Left Behind sanctions and the opportunity for some additional funding. One of the sanctions that we're currently under is 21 of our schools are doing exactly what you said, Mr. Vargas, for the next school year. They're in what's called the restructuring phase. We already have one school, Indian Hill, that's been through that phase. They've created the model that you just described, we've got a principal luncheon meeting in December, they have to implement and have their plans done by May. We spent a year last year with principals, teachers, gathering input, creating that model, having many of the components you just read, except for the principal change, that's not a part of what it is. The State Department has approved it and said, it's the best model they've seen for restructuring in Nebraska, and that's a quote from Randy McIntyre. So, we're now in a position where next school year, unless the waivers come through that quickly, which our school board president, who I met with two hours ago, I think it was, for the state school board, not Mr. Wayne, Dr. Rachel Weis, Dr. Rachel Weis, the state school board president, said, she is so ambitious about this, the waiver and the college-ready standards, just rewrote English Language Arts, is now rewriting the math standards to get buy-in on that. She has a timeframe of having it completed by April to get feedback from the feds, she said, by either May, June, or July, and she's using the Utah example as kind of a model. So, the good news is, there's a waiver possibly in our future for the state of Nebraska, because some of these laws, both sides of the aisle would agree, probably don't work anymore in terms of No Child Left Behind. The restructuring plan, I would love to present to all of you, the executive council has seen it, we have one principal who's already done it, so we, and that's a school improvement plan. So, we'd love to show you the model we've worked out for those schools.
I appreciate that. Sorry, just one quick response. Love to see the turner, the, what's the plan called again?
It's Federal Language, they call it the Restructuring Plan.
Okay.
It's for year five schools.
Okay, that's great. I would also, because it sounds like for that plan, it still excludes some of the components that you, we would, you would consider turnaround, like maybe the school principal being removed, which is one of the components of the SIG grant, and some of these other ones, it's also. ones, it's also replacing 50% of the staff with new teachers, or doing some type of evaluation of, you know, replacing staff, there's also school closures, that's part of the SIG grant too, is an option in this for the Nebraska Department of Ed. It still makes me think that, I want to see that plan, I would love to see more of a comprehensive plan on how we are approaching innovation that aligns with our strategic plan. Because when I was looking at a strategic plan yesterday, there still wasn't as much there around a school improvement turnaround plan, turnaround school district plan, much more comprehensive, something that guides us on how we should operate from here on in on that, as opposed to just working with one school and trying to figure out how to do it. I'd like for us to zoom out and be included in all the things that we're already aligning our work to, but I'd love to see that.
Be happy to provide that, and I'm not aware of SIG requiring reconstitution, so that's something I was not aware of. When we talked to Randy McIntyre and Diane Steamer, they said that's an option, not a requirement.
Sorry, it is an option. Thinking about purpose-built communities and some of the other places that it works in, that is something that they have done in other districts. Granted, they're a little bit more nimble, because in some other districts, they're operating under some charter model, but given that it's a potential option, it seems like we need more stakeholder engagement, we need more engagement, obviously, with the OEA, because this involves teachers and parents and communities. It still makes me, we need to have a more comprehensive plan on how to approach this, as opposed to going in just with one school.
Mrs. Underwood.
Okay, so I have a couple of questions. So, the SIG grant is due in February, and if we get those dollars, they, I'm assuming that there's a timeframe attached to that, so, and it would need to, basically, the money would need to start to be spent, or the program that the funding is attached to would need to start to be spent when, next fall?
That would be correct.
Okay. So that implies that the 75 North project would get underway next fall, correct? Because we haven't really had that discussion on schedule at the board table.
Well, and again, you could, ideally, that would be the perfect marriage, I think you're right, Mrs. Underwood, just like Mr. Vargas said, in terms of, and maybe he didn't say this, but the funding matching the project to help support or offset costs, but that would be. But we have to make sure that's doable, and as you get input from people, they may present things or associations and say, yes, this is doable, this part isn't, we'll have to come back and go through an iterative process. In an ideal world, we would look at the national model, and there's several examples. Purpose-built communities have done this in public schools before, you would be the governing board for that, because that's what they do when they put it in public schools. You should know, purpose-built communities have also done this in public schools that have charter schools, so that exists as a model as well for those states that have charter schools.
Thank you, and I just want to be clear, I'm not against this, you know, starting next fall, I just want to make sure that the board is aware that, you know, the February deadline implies some things as far as schedule goes. And then my other question was, and I think you may have already answered it, but I want to ask it just because, what, are there other strings that are attached to those grant dollars besides the things that you mentioned, like the targeted outcomes and the auditing and the models and things like that?
The one that got our attention was the one Mr. Vargas mentioned, which is that the principal changes. So I'll use, Lincoln Public Schools applied and got one, the principal at Elliott Elementary was actually quite successful, had been doing those increases at 5% at a time, much like has happened at Howard Kennedy. She actually moved to a central office position where she was continuing to work in instructional leadership, but they switched jobs. When I talked to, I think it was Winnebago or Walt Hill, I don't remember now, when they received their grant, they flipped their principal from the middle school to the elementary and elementary to middle school in order to say they have changed principles. So a lot of school districts have done a variety of things, but the changing of the principal is a requirement, so you do need to be aware of that. The other thing I didn't mention, and I think I may have given the wrong impression, our school district does have a school improvement planning process, we just finished reviewing that. It's a part underneath our academic action plan, and we've actually gone up the last three years in a row in school-wide, district-wide achievement on every NISA score, math, reading, writing, science, in the district. So, we do have a school improvement plan in our school district, and it has been working. Thank you.
Ms. Williams, followed by Mr. Scanlon.
So, we're talking about both of these things, and as we're talking about them together, I guess my question is, looking at where we are in our district right now, our teachers are very taxed, and so, looking at both of these things combined, are we asking our staff to do even more? Because we have a lot of district-wide change happening, and if any of you have been in a building in the last month or two months, you will see that there's a lot of change in implementation, and I'm going to shout out Howard Kennedy staff, because I've worked with them for quite a while. And I just, for me, looking at, we're talking about two things and we're trying to cram them together, and I honestly think that we need to figure out what it is that we're going to do at Kennedy, and make sure that that staff sitting out there has some input and that we are able to hear that input. But my number-one question on this SIG grant is, you know, what does that mean to our staff? How much more are we asking of them? And I do like Mr. Vargas talking about, let's maybe look at some other schools, I think that, you know, we already are asking a lot of everyone. We have to figure out what our plan for Kennedy is first. I think that trying to layer so many different things, I don't think that's fair to the staff, I think we have to be mindful of why we're all here, we're in the business of educating young people, but those very people that are educating the young people, if they're taxed and tired, how can we implement all these extra things on top of that? So I think we really need to sit back and have that conversation within ourselves and find out what's going on in those buildings. You know, every building has a different culture, every building has a different environment, and we have to look at that building first and foremost. If we're not going to do that, then I think that we're honestly setting ourselves up for failure, and we're going to overwork the staff and, you know, everyone in that building. So I think we need to really look at that before we say we're trying to combine all of these things, and what is our plan? Let's have that conversation first, let's talk about 75 North, let's talk about what does this mean to Kennedy. We understand what it means to the community surrounding that, we know that there needs to be some revitalization, but what does it look like at Kennedy? I'm glad to hear that you went to talk with that staff, but I want the staff to talk to us as well, because when we're making that decision, I want to make an informed decision. I mean, I can say, I know those kids in the building, I can shout out some names, and Ms. Hitchler, you make sure that they know that La Pista and Tutwee and Nibokora and Gavin, I mean, these are kids that I work with personally, I mentor these kids, and they mean a lot. What does that mean to those kids? What does that mean to those teachers that have reached those students if we're asking them to do this plus this plus this? We need to figure out where we are. So I really think that we really should look at the SIG separately from this, at this school, particularly because there's a lot of change that's coming, so we can't, you know, I mean, we have district change, and then we're looking at this project and at the school, and then we're looking at, when do we say, you know what, we need to pump our brakes a little bit, and we need to figure out what's going to be best for the school, what's best for the students, what's best for the community. I mean, it sounds good to sit here and talk about all of these things and the money and the money and the money, but at the end of the day, our business is about education and teaching those kids. And if we're not focusing on that, that money can go to other schools or whatever that looks like, but I think we are really kind of getting ahead of ourselves in the big picture of what does this look like? The staff, I mean, you can, they're tired, they've worked all day, but they still came because they want to know what's happening, what's the conversation? So we need to really sit back and think about all of those things before we start to have these very large, grandiose ideas, we have a lot of work going on. And I'm going to say again, I mean, I've been to, in the past, four business days, I've been at seven elementary schools, and they're tired, you know, they're exhausted, they're trying to keep up with the change that we, there's a lot of change that we're implementing, but we're not allowing them that time to catch up, and then we're already talking about, okay, let's add this whole another layer of change on top of that. So, while it sounds good, right now, we're not looking at who's implementing this, we're not going to be in those building implementing that, and we really need to have that conversation as we move forward. At the end of the day, I'm going to say one more time, our business is education of our young people, of our future, and we really need to think about that, because I think it, again, it sounds good, and all of these things coming, and all these federal dollars, and all these programs and all of that, but this is our district, and we need to stand up for our students and our community and really make sure that we're doing what's best for them. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Scanlon.
First, I'd like to just congratulate Howard Kennedy for being a Gold Award recipient that is, congratulations, 5% is great. Some questions that I had, what, now that we've passed this large amount of $421 million bond, what was allocated for the other schools that were, you had listed, was it seven schools? Did that include Howard Kennedy?
The bond is separate from this?
No, I guess I'm just saying about the schools that were in that category, category four?
Tier-one schools?
Tier-one, yeah.
Okay.
Could you tell me how many of those schools, there were again, seven?
There were seven, that's correct.
And did that include Howard Kennedy?
That is correct.
I'd just like to, I guess, not tonight, if you don't have that information, but what dollar amount was allocated for those other six, other than Howard Kennedy, in the bond? That, I know, I know Howard Kennedy was, it did not have the dollar amounts allocated, because I think this project was already in the process and being discussed, and we had some very generous private dollars that were, that were being talked about, and I guess that is something that needs to be addressed, just for the public, that some of those other schools, I think they have bond dollars allocated for them, that Howard Kennedy did not have, so I'd like that, just if you could address that.
That is a great question, Mr. Scanlon, and I'll defer to Dr. Turnquist, but I'm guessing that might need a little research.
We can have that for you for the next meeting.
Okay, and I just wanted the public to understand that that was one of the things that stood out to me as we were going through the allocations for the different schools, that Howard Kennedy was greatly underrepresented, underrepresented on that, the bond dollars because of what we had going. And also, could you, whether it's tonight or at the next meeting, kind of give a big picture of what this is, where we've got, we're talking about Howard Kennedy, we've got, that's, the Head Start program is based there, early childhood, education, and with the North Omaha facility that's coming on board, and also with community involvement, how can we get a big-picture type thing, and how, if we were to go for a SIG grant, to, how does that all kind of play into the big picture of things, just so we can see? I understand Anthony's concern about other schools, but I guess, kind of, my thought is, Kennedy was kind of left to the side on the bond issue because of the opportunity that we've been afforded with the 75 North, and I'd just kind of like to get that idea of, you know, some of these other schools that are going to get things with the bond that Kennedy wouldn't get, but they would get under the 75 North program, and some of the grants and other private dollars, if you could provide that, I think that would be helpful for the community and for the public.
I just want to jump in and say that Howard Kennedy was a part of the 98, 99 bond, so they didn't have a greater allocation, but where the confusion or for the public may lie is that the executive director from Project 75 came, 75 North came to the initial bond conversation and talked about developing a partnership back in June, and that he talked about STEM labs and other things they'll be able to put into the building with private dollars, but the reason they weren't on necessarily this bond, except for the fire, life, and safety, and technology, was because they were a part of the 99 bond. So I just wanted to, Dr. Turnquist.
That same thing would be true of Okonda.
And then, we can provide that background knowledge, which you just heard from Mr. Wayne and Dr. Turnquist, but in terms of a big picture, we didn't, we haven't proceeded yet with teachers to find out, are they too tired for this, is there something you want? Do you want, do you think it should be delayed? We need to have those conversations to actually create the plan, to bring back to you a plan.
Any other questions, Mr. Scanlon? Mr. Snow.
Thank you, Mr. President, I just have a question or two. Dr. Kerberg, how many times has the 75 North Committee been meeting with OPS in the last four to five months?
I don't know a specific number, but I can generalize. I know they've had meetings with board members, and I know there's been some trips to Atlanta. I went on one of those trips. We have formed a group to come together and look at big-picture topics once there's a plan, and that group, that steering committee, heard one presentation from 75 North and then met a second time, did not meet again because we wanted to wait for board approval because we were at a point to make plan development. We've got a staff member, Jennifer Leclerc, who Othello has contacted as needed for information, Othello Meadows. I don't know if it's been formal meetings, but there's been some phone conversations too. And then, I know Othello has indicated he's had conversations with individual board members, so I couldn't, I couldn't really tell you. I can tell you there's been two committee meetings, and I can tell you that there's been trips to Atlanta, but I couldn't tell you if there's been more than that. The committee isn't currently meeting, because they were at a point to start to develop a plan, and we didn't want to proceed with the plan until the board told us to.
See, this is something I feel that, I might be wrong in saying it, but that meeting, those actions feel like we're not needed as a board, when you're having meetings like that, let me finish. It's like, we have to do a rubber stamp, this is what this meeting technically was. I don't know what's going to happen in that school. I know we all want something for Kennedy great, but to me, it looks like you guys already have a plan. And I think that's insulting to me, to my district, to those teachers, and to those kids. I thought when we went to 75 North was just to take a look at that school in Atlanta. I didn't know a plan, and it seems like today we have a plan.
We don't.
You say you don't have a plan, but you have been meeting, and I don't think any other board member has known about meetings with the district. It's insulting, and that's just my opinion. I take it as that. Any meetings that happen like that and you want board approval, you come to the board and you say, hey, guys, we're going to start a steering committee, we, who's on this steering committee, we're going to start this steering committee, we're going to be meeting OPS staff. We're going to start driving this, but we're going to keep the community engaged. But that's not, this meeting was, we're coming here, we want to move ahead with this project, and here's some money attached to it. And this is for one school. That's all I have to say.
Moving on to Mrs. Gotti.
So I have several questions related specifically, just so that I have clarification on the grants, and I do remember when Indian Hills came before us, and was a needs improvement plan, and I was so very impressed with their state test writing scores, and so, clearly showed me that we're doing some work there. So my question is related to that, what's the difference, well, several questions, but the first one is, what's the difference between what we're doing in needs improvement, that you mentioned, we have 20 schools in, versus what would be additional requirements that the SIG would put on that school? Kind of in reference to Ms. Williams' question, is it just the principal? Is it just the principal change or is there a whole lot more different than what we have already that you mentioned as a state, you know, stamped plan that they said, wow, you've done a great job? What's the difference there?
At, at this time, until we write it, I don't see a significant difference between the restructuring plan and the school improvement grant plan. We're the first group to go through the restructuring in the state of Nebraska. Lincoln Public Schools is as well. And so we're thinking that many of those pieces would fit into this, but we don't know that for certain. And then I, I forgot some information I feel it would be important to correct. And I, I hate the fact that anyone would think we were advancing without input. We did meet with board officers. We did have Mr. Wayne at a meeting. We did ask for what next steps should occur. We did seek guidance. We did not act without board guidance. And we did that, I, I don't remember the date and I'm sure Mr. Wayne would, when we had a community meeting and we got guidance at that time, here's how we should advance, here's the next steps. And I, I would never proceed without getting guidance from board president, vice president, as to what's next. So I, I just regret that that impression was left. That is not my intent. And we will not convene a steering committee if you don't want us to. We absolutely won't. We didn't want to be in a position where if you asked a question, how much would this cost? How many FTE, what does it look like? We wanted to answer your questions, but we didn't want to, and we don't have a plan. You can ask anyone on the committee. And I, I regret it appeared that way. I sincerely do.
I, I will just say that we did meet as a board of officers, but I think those committee meetings were before. And I think it just, this is a, I mean, we're, we got so much going on. I think it's an issue where we have to, everybody's has to send emails, keep things updated. I, I, it's neither here nor there for me at this point. I think my overall concern, well, you have more questions, I'll wait, sorry.
Well, and I, I just, I do want to add that we did, Dr. Kerberg and Ms. Leclair did come before us and, and said, how would you like this to work? And we said, let's put it on the board agenda. And I, and I'm pretty sure Mr. Ray included that in the board notes of what had happened that day. And that was kind of how it proceeded from there. So that would be that. So my next question is really related to the timeframe of applying. So if we don't think there's a whole lot of difference, how long does it take to get the application done? And, and really, what's the drop dead date that you would have to start working on that? And then are there any restrictions on the SIG funds such as, can you use it for early childhood? I mean, are there other things that we can also do or is it very specific to K6 instruction?
You know, I think what would be appropriate, because I think there's some questions here and I don't have it in front of me. I think a very thorough review of what the SIG grant can and can't do and allow you to make a decision. I think that our grant writer, Jocelyn Perkins, would probably need four weeks, working with the school, maybe six. I think there's time to come back with more information. Last year it was decided not to proceed with this. And I, I do want to go back over because I, I hate to go back, but I just, I think, Mr. Snow, you just need to know again, the meeting last summer with the community that Mr. Wayne attended was when we decided to have board members go to Atlanta. There was no steering committee at that time. That's when we talked about this framework. And we had community people there, we had lots of people around the table. So I, I, again, I would never move forward without board direction if it's something that your guidance is needed for. It would be inappropriate of me.
Mrs. Gadding, go ahead. I just, board members, we have a long learning community discussion coming up. So if we can think of some thoughtful questions here and, and move the conversation on whether, and I'll get back to it. But Miss, Miss Gadding.
Oh, I just want to add one final thing, which was pretty timely. I had a constituent call actually this afternoon and say that she had been at CREW, which is Commercial Real Estate Women's Group, and heard a North 75 Project discussion today and wanted to reach out to me as a board member and to say, hey, this sounds like an amazing opportunity for an area of North Omaha. So I just want to encourage you to, in your support of it. So I am supportive of it, but I appreciated her phone call and said that the group as a whole, the women that were in that group were extremely supportive as well. So I just wanted to share that with the board.
Hold on, is there any other, before we jump back to people who have, who have not spoken yet? Mrs. Fay, then followed by Mr. Rogers.
Of course, I put a lifesaver in my mouth right before I wanted to talk. And they're really big lifesavers. I think this is, this whole discussion, I think, is just further verification that we need some sort of rubric through which we can look at all these kind of projects. I think I heard Yolanda talk about big picture. Tony talked about what other schools and what's, what's the plan for improvement in multiple schools. And I've been a fan of the 75 North Project since I first heard about it, which was probably a year and a half ago. And I'm very supportive of this project and these kinds of projects going forward. But I, I need to know how this and the potential for a SIG grant fits into what we're doing overall, not just for one school. And so I think that's what I, and maybe that's what we're all struggling with, is where does this fit in overall? Where does it fit in the timeline? Where does it fit in with the strategic plan? Where does it fit in with the funding? When, because there, there always needs to be an, there's always an off ramp for any outside dollars that come in. We've always got to figure out how we can replace those with general fund dollars. That's, that's always an eventuality. Dr. Poole's laughing, right? It's an eventuality we have to prepare for. So I think we're, we're all kind of struggling with all of these things because we want it to work because it's such a neat, exciting project. And I think we all want this for Howard Kennedy, the staff, the community, the, the whole project together, the whole neighborhood. But we just need to see how it's going to fit in overall. And then if it works, you know, where else can we do this? How, what other areas can we be a part of revitalizing neighborhoods and improving schools? And doing what Yolanda talked about, educating kids. So I think that's what I'm struggling with. How does it fit in overall? And what's the, what's the, the litmus test to make sure that now is the right time? Because if I can pass that, if it can pass that, through that rubric, through, you know, then, then, then we'll know that it's the right time to go forward and we can, you know, move with haste, so.
The only request for clarification I'd have is for us to know how the SIG grant would fit in, we'd have to know what the plan was. So we would have to actually develop some kind of a plan to know what parts of the grant would fit into that plan. That would be my only request for clarification, if you're asking, yes. Just let, let us know, we'll do whatever you'd like first.
Mr. Rogers.
Yeah, my response to that is, it's a chicken and egg, is that we engage in a conversation about a plan, but the plan not be just for one school. You know, I'm thinking about our conversations early on in the strategic planning process and we were looking at strategic plans from other districts, like we looked at Houston, I think we looked at Austin ISD, we looked at Charlotte Mecklenburg. And when I look at Charlotte Mecklenburgs again, you know, there's a specific strand, Goal Six, that says, inspire and nurture learning, creativity, innovation and entrepreneurship through technology and strategic school redesign. There's no if, ands or buts around that school board and that district that they're going to do school redesign and that SIG is a significant component of how they move forward. That's the piece that I think we're missing. We don't have that, that, that is not as explicitly stated. And what we do state is to think around some of our other innovations or creating a plan for best practices within the district and internationally, that, that is within our language. It still means we need to create more of a, of a plan to pivot back and not just on the one school. That's what I would love to see. Because I think to Ms. Williams' point, I would love to see us be much more ambitious and pragmatic. And actually, a lot of what Ms. Williams said is in line with, so the Reform Support Network, which is a, a network of basically a think tank of consultants that work with every single state school, schools that are using SIG grants over the last three years. And they came up with a set of best practices on how to engage the community. And a lot of what Ms. Williams said and we've sort of started to echo is, are the concerns I think some of us have or so, or voice, which is, or some of the things we want to make sure we do, which is make engagement a priority, establish infrastructure and alignment with strategic plans, communicate proactively in the community, listen to the community, respond to its feedback, turn community supporters into leaders and advocates. These, I think like that resonates with what I heard from Ms. Williams. I don't think we're yet doing that. And I think we need to make sure we're being, not taxing people, but then also being ambitious with what we're doing it. It's a lot easier to do that when we have a more comprehensive plan that is embedded in what we had spent the last year and a half working on. Then we're not just letting one thing set precedent over what we have spent so much time on. That's, that's kind of where my mind is headed. I want to make sure that we don't go down a tricky slope of just letting one thing outside influence it. But if this is having a conversation about like learning, then I think that's completely great. But I don't want to get to a place where we're just letting one thing supersede what we've spent so much time on.
So just to recap, what we're trying to get, what staff is asking for board approval from is to develop a plan. And the reason I wanted this conversation to continue and move in that direction is because I think staff has a pretty good idea of the questions that need to be answered as a part of this plan. I have not spoke yet and my minds are going to be just simple questions that, as we come back to the plan, when this plan is developed, if it deviates any way from Atlanta, I want to know how and why. So Atlanta's governing structure is they have a local board. If, if that's a critical component, then why is it not here? And it may be legal reasons, it may be whatever, but I think it's critical that we address anything that's distinguishable from Atlanta. I think we have to address if we're going to think systematically, what does a school look like? It's K8 down there, pre-K8. What is it, if it, if it differs in Omaha, what is that, again, why? But more importantly, what's, what happens after these kids leave? I mean, we, we had a Wilson Focus School program and we didn't have a plan of where they were going to go afterwards. And it kind of, I think, hurt, hurt the overall launching of the program and where we were going. So there has to be, I hate to use the word pathway because it's so cliche, we use it all the time. Or, you know, what's the pathway for a kid? But what's the pathway for the kid if he leaves that school? And somebody has to answer in this plan, why Howard Kennedy? In the sense of, I don't like talking about the past, but the reality was there was a period of mediocrity, I guess you could say mediocrity, whatever. But this year they're a Gold Star. So if we're going to have fundamental changes, somebody has to explain why and what message is that going to send to other Gold Star schools that they achieved Gold Star, but we still may do something. So I think that's a good question. And as far as the money, I'm, I'll just say I'm not in favor of a SIG grant going to Kennedy. We, we have other ways that I think of doing this. And so I would rather see another school or other schools get that SIG grant. So that's just me, but those are questions that I, I like to see answered in this plan. So with that, I think I'll entertain a motion to, oh, sorry, Lacey, Ms. America. Oh, no, I was just going to get to a motion.
I don't think we should look exactly like Atlanta because we're not Atlanta. And I don't think the work that Purpose Built Communities has done in other communities outside of Atlanta looks exactly like Atlanta. And I, that's, yeah. So I, I completely understand where you're coming from and saying we want it to look like this, explain why it's different. But it should be different because we are different. We're not Atlanta, we're Omaha. We're not any of the other communities that they've worked in. We're Omaha. And I also want to make sure this is clear from a point that was brought up earlier because we were discussing the bond funds and the SIG funds, like they could be used on the same type of projects. And I just want to make sure that we're all clear and aware. Our bond funds were for capital projects and the SIG funds would not be going towards capital projects. That would be program implementation, professional development, those type of projects. Just so there's not community misunderstanding outside of our board table.
And just to clarify, I'm not saying we have to be exactly like Atlanta. I'm just saying I, they, they seem to have a factors down there. For example, all their third graders play violin. They teach them violin because studies show that it connects and stimulates both sides of the brain. Well, if we don't fully implement that, then we need to have an explanation. So when the community asks, why don't we do that too, they're just an explanation. With that, I'll entertain a motion to approve, Ms. Underwood.
I just wanted to sort of reinforce also what Lacey was saying in regards to Atlanta. We've never had a full board discussion saying we need to look exactly like Atlanta. So thank you for clarifying that, both Ms. America and Mr. Wayne. Because they, I, I specifically remember them saying that what works there does not necessarily work in every other community. But they thought that Omaha would be set up really well to do something as far as Purpose Built Communities goes. So I, I just wanted to second, I suppose, what Lacey's point was.
So we will entertain a motion to approve a development of a plan. We are not, let me clarify at this point, seeking approval of a plan, but a conversation of what the plan may look like and what it may entail, so we can have further conversations before approval.
So moved.
There's a motion on the floor by Mrs. Williams, is there a second?
Second.
Motion by Mrs. Williams, second by Mrs. Gadding. Any more discussion or questions? Mr. Evans?
Just a point of clarification, Mr. President. So that staff doesn't get confused and someone feels like we did something that wasn't said here. If it's approved, you're releasing staff to go work with Kennedy staff, community, parents, and to start working with them to bring back proposals to you. I want to make sure, is that kind of a synopsis of what I've heard? And had a lot of conversation about Atlanta and what it is and what it isn't. But at the end of the day, we're bringing back proposals. And you'll probably look at them and say, well, I like that, but I understand the parents' community like that or staff like that, but I would like X, Y, or Z. And you're going to tell us what X, Y, or Z, which is fine with us. But I just want to make sure we're on that same page, that that's what we'll start to do, is meet with staff to prepare something for you to bring back. And then you can send us back on whatever your thoughts are. Because we kind of went several different directions in the last 20 minutes. So I want to make sure I'm on the same page with, with what I heard, Mr. President.
Correct. Any more discussion, Mrs. Fay?
So will you direct them, even though we haven't adopted it yet? Will you direct them to bring that back based on the policy for community partnerships that was discussed?
I thought we were bringing back a recommendation for a school and school design, not necessarily, I don't know that we're getting community money from this at this juncture. Now, that may be something that comes back, but that community...
But the 75 North Project is with a community. I mean, the money is just one aspect of the policy, community partnership proposal and evaluation policy. And there's definitely a community partner involved. So it would seem to me that that's the template by which you discuss the, the project, right? I mean, isn't it, or not?
Yeah, and I think that's what we're, we don't have a policy in place yet.
Right.
But I think that is the template. And so what, what part of this is, is we've already, for theoretical purposes, already went through the letter of engagement and we're having a board conversation saying, go follow, go have a, fold a plan or proposals to the board and we'll have a conversation. So it'll be almost like step two of that plan. We've already passed the...
Right, but there is a step two sort of listed in that policy, so.
At the, at the board level, right.
I guess, point of clarification, the community partners not driving the plan. I thought it was the community, the staff, the parents, and then we bring it back to the board and the board drives the plan. And that would be my only point. Is that the way, the way you see that in the LOI?
I guess I always think the board drives the plan in partnership with the community partner. So that's, that's always the way.
Well, no, that's, that's a good point though, because so when we meet with community, I want to make sure I'm getting staff good information too. Were to meet, you're saying, meet with Project 75 North and help them add to the proposal that comes back to you? You want 75 North to be doing that? Or not? Because are they our partners that you want feedback on?
I'm, am I misunderstanding that this whole project with Howard Kennedy has not, is not in conjunction with 75 North?
I think we want...
I think we're, there's a confusion on semantics here. What we're saying, I think, Mrs. Fay, that what we're asking for right now... What we're saying, I think, Mrs. Fay, that what we're asking for right now, this motion is for staff to engage the community, work with 75 North as a part of the process of engaging the community, work with OEA, work with all building staff to help in the community, to help develop a plan, which may have multiple pieces that come back to the board for review and for approval. It could be multiple, but it's still, I mean, they're still a community partner. So, I just think, I think we're still talking about the same thing.
Mm-hmm.
Because I'm rereading the policy that we just talked about, and we're still talking about the same thing.
I think that helps me. I know it's kind of confusing, because you've also got Purpose Built, which would be potentially part of the partnership, because they do do some of the training that goes with parts and pieces of this, if the board chooses that model. And so, that, that makes more sense to me. I think, I think I'm clarified. I hope staff is as well.
Any more discussion?
Well, Superintendent Evans kind of touched base on it. So, I just want to make sure that, my understanding of this project is that 75 North is the community piece. By proximity, the school is included in that, but I, aren't we partnering more so with purpose on what the school looks like, what the program looks like? I mean, you can't, I don't think you can have that community group building up the area. And I mean, I think there's two very distinct things. I think we're working with them, because we want that community to be built around that school, and to really build this, they're doing great things. But how we can, I mean, if you have a staff that's showing great gains, then I think we could actually with more professional development, but more things that that staff could, it could be beneficial for them. I think that's where, for me, I think that partnership would be more so as far as our school is concerned.
I, I just, I don't want to get confused, that all we're asking for is, all staff is asking for is a proposal of a plan. And I know we're talking about 75 North, but even in Atlanta and other places, there are other partners involved. So, we haven't defined what the partnership is that's part of the proposal coming back. So, we're saying the same thing.
Right, okay.
For the plan, my only comment here is, I want to make sure, I remember two board meetings ago, or a board meeting ago, when we received the plan, or some shortened timeline, I was really taken back by how quick it was and how aggressive it was. I want to make, and so if I was feeling that way, if we were to show something like that to our community, I think they would feel also somewhat taken back, too aggressive, you know, you're telling us what you're already going to do. So, one, for, for staff, when you are having these conversations, please make sure that you are engaging more in the, you know, what is school turnaround? What are the benefits of some of these models, less around, this is our timeline, because we want to be very ambitious, and we're trying to get this going yesterday. Because I don't think that's the way that we, we can and should do it. I just want to make sure we're really cautious, because I think that we have had done a lot of things, and we have been too quick and not engaged in the community with fidelity. And this is something we haven't done before with this type of turnaround. So, please, 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 make sure you're really, really not leading with that, with just the plan and the timeline.
So, I will, I guess I will cease discussion at this time and have a roll call vote. There's a motion on the floor by Ms. Williams, second by Mrs. Gotti. Roll call, please.
Scanlon.
Yes.
Snow.
Yes.
Underwood.
Aye.
Vargas.
Aye.
Wayne.
Aye.
Williams.
Aye.
Fay.
Aye.
Gotti.
Aye.
America.
Aye.
Nynai.
What I did not hear, or what I did hear during this conversation, and I'm looking around for board to confirm, that at this time, nobody was interested in doing approval of the SID grant until there's more information and a plan. If somebody wants to make a motion, I'll entertain that. Otherwise, we will move to the next topic. So, moved, moving to the E15, E1, E15, E1F, Learning Community Finance. Mr. Evans, we'll turn to you for the Learning Community, next items of agenda.
Thank you, President Wayne. Just a quick introduction. I know the board's had an opportunity to look at all these materials. We were requested by the Senate Ed Committee to have some response in reference to a review and a thorough analysis of the current learning community, all aspects of the learning community. And so, in front of you today is kind of the end of that. And as you know, several articles have been in the Omaha World-Herald describing what other districts across the LC have decided on. And it's kind of been a mixed response, predominantly supportive, but there have been some items that some districts did not support. You may have noted that when you looked at Bellevue's responses, which I believe were a week and a half ago. What we're, what we're trying to do is send a message to the Senate Ed Committee of, if we are going to change something, we want to make sure it's something that's productive and supportive of OPS. And so, I think that's what, what I see in this, is that we have some opportunities to do that. But I also recognize there are some pieces and parts that are more difficult, probably the finance one than others. Some of them on the early childhood, I think those are real easy votes, although some districts struggled with some of those issues, too. So, I think what the Senate Ed Committee wants is, what do we think? And they also want your comments. And we're going to put all those comments together. Mr. Ray is responsible for keeping all the comments together. Those will also go to the Senate Ed Committee. Whatever comments the board chooses to have on each of these items, they'll get those comments, as well as your vote, whether you were for or opposed. So, it's an opportunity for you to give some guidance and direction to the Senate Ed Committee.
At this time, I guess we'll go one by one, and have a conversation and seek a vote. Mr. Snow.
Mr. President, I know one time we were talking about comments from board members. How will we add these comments into this?
Right now.
Not just verbal comments, but like, we were talking about written comments. If, let's say, eight of the board members agreed with something and one didn't, how will we put that comment with that decision, so the Senate Ed Committee can review that as well?
It would be an eight to one vote with Mr. Ray including comments as far to the many minutes.
Will we be able to submit written comments?
You could, yes, we, this, just because...
I'm just saying, like, if you wanted to write something...
Yes, you can.
Okay, thank you.
It is due, though, November, end of this month, so any additional comments you have to make.
So, you need it like in a week? Okay, thank you.
So, we'll need the additional comments by the 17th. So, the first one is the Learning Community Finances. And I'll be, not everybody, not every school district will, one by one, they kind of, some of them just lumped it together and did a proposal. But, so however, we want to do it. Mr. Scanlon.
Would it help if the superintendent gave just, in each different category that we're going through, just kind of gave the background of how the superintendents came to agreement on that section?
Yep.
Yes, Mr. Scanlon, I'd be happy to do that. Number one, I think, is one of the biggest and most complex one, because it's removal of the common levy, but it's also expansion of TOSA funding, or actually, external funding for ELL and high poverty, which is really what that first bullet's about. Currently, we're funded, I believe, Dr. Poole, at 85% on our ELL, ELL students and high poverty. We'd like that additional 15% back. And that's going to make up for, we do have a small amount of gain on the common levy. I believe it was a million five, Mark usually gives me the full number, a million five...
Five hundred ninety-five thousand, that's some other change.
So, that's what we'd be losing, is that dollar amount that Mark referenced. The ELL and TOSA group, especially if we could do it external to TOSA, the ELL and high poverty, would be a much, much higher amount than that. It would be more state support for OPS, if provided. And of course, this last year was our first year of having any common levy impact on the positive side. The next bullet impacts ESU and the, the opportunity for us, and Dennis, I'll refer to you on that ESU impact. It's a pretty minimal dollar amount on, on that.
That's correct. It's, it was really some money that was set aside from both ESU3, which is the, basically, the Douglas and Sarpy County School Districts, except for OPS, which is ESU19. Money that was set aside from both of those ESUs, from their core services, to be utilized for evaluation of the programs in the, in the learning community. And so, those have been used. But again, it's a matter of transferring what would have been considered resources for one political subdivision to support another political subdivision. Question was, why won't you just, if evaluation is important, why don't you just support the evaluation directly?
And the last bullet is on transportation, providing transportation external to the cost of TOSA. That has significant dollar amount impacts for all the learning community schools. And as I understand it, it was a promise by the state that the transportation would be external to TOSA, but then was lumped into TOSA. So, I think that's one that has a positive impact on all the districts. So, that's kind of the real quick look at those four bullets. One of the things we ask is that if the state's looking at this, don't deviate from, from any of these pieces. You'll see it in bold, all four sections constitute one recommendation. Don't pick pieces and parts of this out. And so, I think that's a real critical piece to recommendation number one, Learning Community Finance.
Well, I'll just jump in and say, I want to pick parts out, because my vision is increase TOSA funding, I agree with. Eliminate 95 cents, I agree with. Revert money back on Bullet 3. And transportation, I agree with. Where I struggle at, and where I would disagree with this, is I would like the learning community, I would like the one and a half cent for early childhood to be given to the district. I think we can run our own early childhood and use the money more effectively. So, that's my comment for Mr. Ray. And while I'll be voting, I guess, against it, I was trying to go, against the recommendation, because that's what I personally believe. I think we've demonstrated that we can do early childhood, and I think convoluted it with funding from other places, and then they can dictate, when I say they, the learning community can dictate what they want on it, and add other things to paperwork or whatever. I'd just rather have it all in-house and do it ourselves. Mr. Scanlon.
I guess I would just like to ask the superintendent, Mark, was there a reason that, I, I know we got to divide it up somehow, you've got finances over in this section, and then you got the early childhood education portion in another. Was there any reason that the finances for early childhood education didn't fall within that recommendation?
Yeah, they, they looked at them as separate, because one was the programmatic usage of those dollars. And so, it was how you capture the dollars, and then how you're specifically using them. And the superintendents, to all their credit, supported the early childhood program, and OPS is the primary benefactor of that. We're going to get more percentage of usage of that early childhood funding than anyone else. And so, it's just supporting that whole direction that has some statutory support, too, from, from the state.
Thank you. I guess, trying to look at both those together, I think the early childhood development that the learning community has been doing is, is fantastic, the South Omaha facility, the North Omaha facility. One thing that I've found with Head Start, and then also some of the early childhood programs, that I don't think the money that we would be saving, or that we'd be asking for would cover the early childhood programs, because we do so much more other than educating the students. There's so many programs with Head Start that try to help the younger parents understand finance, understand cooking, understand just parenting, that I think is much more expensive than what we would be getting, and we'd actually be losing money. And these partnerships where we get the, the health center organizations, the, the organizations that help with refugees and learning the language, and educating the parents into, and acclimating them into the United States, those types of programs, I don't think that we can, that we need our community partners. And as a school district, I don't think we can afford to do it without them. So, that's kind of where I think we, we need to allow the learning community to continue that, where they have, they have a better opportunity to partner with those, with those community organizations that, you know, where we're focused on educating the student, a lot of early childhood education is focused on educating the family with Head Start and with other programs. So, I, that's just where I think that, that the finances, I think, are better served with, with the learning community rather than OPS.
Dennis Poole, Dr. Poole, Dr. Poole, or Mr. Evans, do you know how much we get for early childhood? And I'm not talking about the programs that Mr. Scanlon was referencing, but how much we get for early childhood from the learning community? And then how much would that two cents generate for OPS if, if we were to have it?
I'm going to, I'm going to refer to Dennis. I think it's a cent and a half in the learning community. I think you referenced two cents, because you'd have to do two cents in OPS to make up for, because now you're not expanding. Is that correct, on what you were thinking on that? Because you're not expanding over the 11 districts. I want to say two and a half million, but I'm going to refer to Dennis.
That would be, that would be a, a great approximation to the amount that we receive from the learning community, directly servicing our early childhood. So, a levy of a penny and a half on district property values would not generate an equivalent amount of money.
So, we would have to go to two. Ms. Gotti, follow, Mrs. Fay.
I guess I just want to say that I do appreciate, on the finance piece, that all of the superintendents recognize the importance of addressing poverty and English language learners, and, and really to think about the state of Nebraska being 49th in public school funding. And I think one of the things that really struck me when we were in Atlanta was asking some of the questions about, so how can you afford to do this? And when I realized the funding per student that they were receiving versus the funding per student we're receiving, you really start to understand the constraints that were put under. So, I appreciate the superintendents recognizing that. I believe, when I looked at the report from 2004 to 2014, child poverty in the state of Nebraska went from like 36 to 45% or somewhere in that range. That's pretty significant. And so, it's, it's an important recognition for the state to start to recognize on a statewide level, because that's, that's a true problem, that if we don't start addressing that, and that's where that early childhood piece comes in and everything else. So, I appreciate the superintendents recognizing that, and seeing the impact of that statewide.
Mrs. Fay.
Yeah, I, I agree with Mrs. Gotti, and I think that's a great step in the, in the right direction. And the direction that the learning community in general was trying to take was to help everyone in the metro area recognize just exactly what you were articulating. I can't support this particular section simply because I think it, in my mind, it misrepresents what the common levy was about, which was not about additional funding for poverty in ELL students, it was about equity across the metro area, based on where, how property taxes fall in each of those school districts. And so, my concern with eliminating the common levy is that we revert back to the, to the previous way of allocating funds through property taxes, and that disparity still exists. I also have concerns about the formula itself and the spending lid, because there would have to be some adjustments there, or we could potentially leave money on the table, as we've done in the past. Correct, Dr. Poole? So, that's not addressed in, in this either. And then, my, my third concern about putting more money into TOSA is that there's been a history of the legislature adjusting the formula, and then, any money that... And then any money that you, any additional weighting that you put in there would be subject to that adjustment. So I think I'd rather see, if I, if the common levy indeed goes away, I'd rather see those funds separate from TOSA and structured in such a way that it's very difficult for the legislature to manipulate them, to move them around in TOSA, to manipulate them, to change the formula and then back a number into it. And I don't know exactly what that looks like. We talked about, you know, I've, I've heard discussion about something that's similar to the roads, the way the roads fund is set aside. And that's just one option. But I think that there's another way to do this besides putting those additional dollars into TOSA. So that's my main concern with this over all of the bullet point, I mean, over all the sections, not the bullet points, but all the sections that we're going to discuss tonight. My, my primary opposition is to this one because I think the common levy is about equity. And I know that in the past, that word and actions taken by previous school boards before I was on this board, over equity for the students in the Omaha Public Schools caused a lot of division. And so it's difficult to talk about, but that's, that's the history and that's why it's there. And so if we're going to eliminate it, there needs to be something that takes its place that's not subject to the manipulation that additional funding in the TOSA formula would be. Ms. Underwood.
Thanks. I, I think I have been in my mind thinking along the same lines as Mrs. Fay on this whole thing. I just wasn't sure how to articulate it. Because I agree that the common levy is sort of a recognition of equity issues as well as the learning community, school districts' sense of shared responsibility. So I, I guess I would agree that, I strongly agree that, you know, we talked in our small group meetings that if the common levy goes away, we need something as, as stable as property tax to sort of take its place. And it feels like maybe TOSA isn't the right formula for that. And then I had a question in regards to the elementary learning centers. I know we're skipping around a little, but the early elementary learning centers plays into this because of the funding piece. Were the rest of the districts in support of this piece of it? Okay. Also, and I think that's important to note because 85% of that one and one-half cents goes to OPS. So that's really encouraging to me that every other district was in support of that.
Mr. Scanlon.
I guess my, just with the common levy and everything, I mean, we just as a school district became a recipient on the winner's side the last year or two. And yet was it, did we lose out five years prior to that? So I guess we're talking about being in support of this common levy that, you know, we've lost out on five years and now we're, we're finally on the good side and it was written in our favor and, you know, that we should have been the benefit of it, which wasn't the case. So I would say at a minimum, you know, if, if the common levy were to continue, it'd have to be rewritten to do what it was intended to do. And, you know, one out of five years, that's, that to me is not doing what it's supposed to be. So I think, while I understand your concerns with TOSA and being at the, you know, having the legislature, if, if funds get tight there, that they could change things, I just don't think the common levy has benefited OPS over the, the existence of the learning community. And while TOSA might not be perfect, it's not taking a million dollars away from us on a yearly basis, I guess. So that's kind of where I can't support the common levy because we've been on the loser's end for so long. And it, and it really is something that the other school districts, they've got reason to not like it as well. It's just they're losing a million dollars here and there. And then you've got some school districts that were not intended to be on the benefitter's side that have benefited more years than OPS, where poverty is a, where we have more free and reduced lunch. So I guess I don't think the common levy is the right answer. I think that it should be eliminated, whether TOSA is perfect, but it's, it's probably not. But we need to move forward in a way that we can find something that is more beneficial to OPS.
Ms. Merrick, followed by Mr. Vargus.
I'll admit, this is one that I am, I am very, very torn on for a lot of the reasons that have been said. As Ms. Scotting said, right now we're 49th in the percentage of state support for our schools, which is, as I've said before, really embarrassing for our state when we place such a value on education. I think I've said before at board meetings that I do believe in the common levy because it was designed to provide stability and equity. It wasn't about more money for poorer districts, less money from richer districts. It was designed to be a stable source of funding for the schools and the learning community versus reliance on TOSA funding, which can swing widely from year to year. I know there, I would agree, there have been issues with the common levy and the fact that at the beginning, we weren't seeing the returns that we thought we would. But a lot of that had to do also with the situation our economy was in when the learning community was started. And as property values have increased, the predictions of how the common levy would work have become true. Other districts have seen larger property value increases than OPS. And that's why we saw a gain of money from the common levy this year because other areas' property values are going up faster than ours, which you can tie to a whole slew of reasons we won't even get into tonight. I would agree with Ms. Fay that I think if we do away with the common levy, we can't just rely on TOSA. And there has to be some other pot out there that funds are going to schools from. Because I, I don't see how our state can put more money into TOSA, knowing that we're getting recommendations that we need to redo our correction system and possibly build a new prison or expand the beds in our prison system, that we have millions of dollars we have to pay back to the federal government for grants that weren't managed properly. And all the money that needs to go into our Health and Human Services program, I don't see how they're going to put more money into TOSA in the foreseeable future, just because of all the other things that are going on in our state. And like I said, I'm very torn. I honestly am not sure how I'm voting currently. But the only way I could support it is, is knowing that they are, it, these four actions would really be seen as one recommendation, that it wouldn't be, okay, we're going to do away with the common levy, but not do the other parts of it. So that's where I am right now.
Mr. Vargus.
Thank you. I'm torn as well. I have to think the one thing that I do agree with that, you know, Ms. Underwood underlines is just this overemphasis on the L, growing our population and trying to address sort of inequities. I think that that's one thing that I really appreciate about this. It is embarrassing that our state funding is 49th. And I want to make sure that, clarifying this, our state funding is 49th in the nation in terms of how much our state is allocating per pupil. But on average, when you still look at per pupil expenditures for our state, we still spend more per state, per student than Los Angeles, Portland, Philadelphia, Seattle, Denver, public schools, San Francisco Public Schools, and Atlanta. So I, there is a bigger conversation still around where we, yes, we need to hold TOSA and figure out, hold it more accountable, figure out how can we improve that formula. But something else, we need to get money out of someplace else and be much more efficient, both as districts, but at the state level, being able to demonstrate that for them on how they can do that. Because I don't think we're going to be able to just find this money out of nowhere. And asking for it without providing some tangible solutions is probably, is actually a really bad way of going about it because then we're telling them to come up with, you know, a solution out of thin air. And we may get sort of the same, the same things that we get, very, you know, limited, limited evolution of TOSA. But I am, I am torn because I see, you know, obviously added benefits to, you know, how this has impacted Omaha, how this has impacted South Omaha and certain programs, and I've heard that from my constituents. But I'm also seeing sort of the added stress on, you know, what, what the stress is having on all citizens on our property values and the taxes. So I, I'm still torn.
Mrs. Gotti.
I, I do think it's important to note though, that Omaha Public Schools spends $1,000 less per student than the state average, which is significant when you consider the poverty in the ELL students that we have versus the rest of the state. So I do think that that's an important distinction, that we're not at the state average by any means. And I think, I mean, I've just decided that I am going to vote yes for this simply because, you know, the, the very specific language of the four actions below constitute one recommendation. And it's not really, I mean, we can't really solve the TOSA problem. That's what the legislature is set to do. And, and they're simply asking us what our recommendations are. So clearly, we're supporting it as a package thing and not as, well, if you don't increase TOSA, you're going to get rid of the common levy. I think everybody's, I think it's very bolded and highlighted that if that doesn't happen, then it doesn't move forward. So I feel like it's, you know, the state ed committee is asking us what would be critical for you. And it has to be a package deal of everything put together versus just picking and choosing. And so we would hope that the, the state ed committee would honor that request, I guess.
I just, I want to say something? No, I just wanted to say that this vote right here is probably the most important vote as it relates to the learning community, being that I served on learning community in an elected position prior. This was the heart of the bill, the common levy. If this board chooses to vote no, or accept this, I guess, accept this recommendation of eliminating the learning community, that signals, I mean, eliminating the common levy, that signals a sign to eliminate the learning community, in my opinion. They could figure out how to help and fund early childhood, they can create a government program or government oversight to do the early childhood piece. But the message we will send to senators is that the core of the initial learning community, which there was two, one was diversity and one was to provide equitable resources to students who need it the most. We are taking one of those cores out. And the diversity issue has been talked about enough to where we know that will probably be tweaked anyway. So I just want, from a historical perspective, since, I mean, I was one of the guys who stood up and was the first board member ever sworn in for the learning community. This is the heart of the learning community. So just keep that in mind if you're going to support or be against it. I'm not saying which way you, you need to vote, but there has been issues with the common levy. Rather still another school district who seems to do better, which I have problems with. But I understand, in my opinion, I think that's what's going to happen if we support this overall recommendation. So, Mrs. Underwood.
Thanks for that historical perspective. I think that, that's really helpful, just to sort of give us a framework for our discussion. I think, Mark, Mr. Snowbuck, I've asked this question earlier and I had to exit for a minute. So say hypothetically that we, we vote against, we decide to oppose this recommendation, is there anything that says that we can't come back with a comment, you know, at the same time in the report that states something about the fact that basically we have a big ask, you know, if, if this does move forward and the common levy is eliminated, somehow putting some statement together for a big ask for state funding of some sort, whether it's through TOSA or not?
The short answer is yes. Millard added a recommendation to not support the learning community at all in general. So outside of these recommendations, you can, the board can vote to add any recommendation we, we so choose. And again, we have the meeting on the 17th. If that's the way the board wants to go, if we need to add language or just, or not, we can do it tonight and maybe clarify and bring it back. But to answer your question, yes, but other school districts have added language. Mrs. Fay.
So I just want to be really clear that we can do whatever we want. This is the superintendent's, the learning community superintendent's recommendation to the education committee that they completed at the request of Senator Sullivan and the education committee. Us reviewing it and voting up or down on their recommendations, we don't even have to do that if we don't want to. We don't have to make a recommendation. We could simply file our own report or do our own, I mean, we could, you know, handle it however we want to. So we're not bound by any structure here necessarily, just maybe by, for consistency's sake, maybe what other school districts have done to handle it in some similar manner. But I think it's important to note that they'll probably take a, a bigger picture view of whatever recommendations come out of the school, each individual school district. One would like to think that they're going to dive down deep into my comment and your comment and, but the reality is they have as many stacks of papers to read as we do. And so it's going to be that big picture that comes across. OPS voted this way on this recommendation and that way on this one, and Miller did this. I mean, that's how I think this will probably be viewed, at least by the majority of the committee. Probably, maybe there will be those who dig a little deeper. But, yeah, that's what they're asking for. So I'm sort of fundamentally opposed from, and this is what I said in my small group meeting, I'm sort of fundamentally opposed to the whole process of being asked to do this because it's not my report. It's not the school board's report. So I think that, you know, I've struggled with that as I've been looking at it over the past week. I've struggled with the idea that this isn't, this isn't my report.
Ms. Williams.
So I'm always going to bring a different twist, although I don't agree with every single line item of the recommendation. I do think historically, this is a great opportunity for the individual school districts to have a voice and to say what we think, what we feel, how this directly affects our districts. And so although they more than likely are not going to look at those individual comments, but maybe some, maybe there's some of them that are like us and we're very advantageous and we want to know, you know, what are board members and what, what does education in Nebraska look like? But I think that us to make a stance, whatever that stance look like, I think that we really have a great opportunity in conjunction with our learning community partnering districts. We have a voice, we have a recommendation from the superintendents, but we have also opportunity to have a voice. And I think that's a great opportunity. Does it make a difference one way or the other, what they do? I don't know. But it is very important to note that we do have the opportunity for the first time to to talk about how this affects us directly. And as, as a cohort of districts, I mean, it's, it's exciting to see that the superintendents could sit down and talk about the differences within the district and really come up with a recommendation that benefits everyone and not just one district versus the other. And there's some benefits that we may or may not get as much as what we think. But I think we're looking at education in Nebraska, and I think this is a historical moment for us as we send this vote to the legislature and the education committee.
And just to clarify and circle back so we can start moving through this a little bit is, there is another process that's through our legislative committee where we will direct our contracted professionals and other people to having conversations with state senators to get whatever this board decides. That's probably a December conversation, late November. This is simply an up or down vote on what the superintendents are recommending. If, if we don't want to vote in favor of it, then, or against it, or abstain, that's an individual choice. If there's a motion on the floor, we'll move forward. But I just want the board to know there is another process in which we hear legislative ideas. So this, we can vote up or down and clarify through our legislative committee and our contracted professional services. I like the way that sounds. So any other, I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove this recommendation.
I would make a motion to support the learning community superintendent's recommendation on the finance issue of their learning community report.
There's a motion to support the superintendent recommendation for learning community finance. Is there a second?
Second.
It's a motion on the floor to support the learning community finance portion of four recommendations that is presented before us. Any more conversation? Seeing none, roll call.
No.
Underwood?
No.
Vargas?
Yes, support.
Wayne?
Yes.
Williams?
Yes.
Fay?
No.
Gadding?
Yes.
America?
No.
Scanlon?
Yes.
That's four no and five yes.
Moving to learning community boundaries, Mr. Evans.
I think this one's a little bit, a little bit easier. Basically, what the language is recommending is that nothing can be changed without both boards approving the boundary. Currently, the, the language is they are frozen as of state statute changes. This would allow for, if a school district agreed with the other school district to shift a boundary, you'd have that authority. To be honest, the, the verbiage is really a part of a conversation that's occurring in South Sarpy, Springville, Platteview, Bellevue, and Papio. They're the ones that really have, in fact, Bellevue was the one that the, the school board wanted a mediator or an arbitrator. That's the language. They voted against it because they wanted an arbitrator to be involved in this dispute. But essentially, it puts it in your lap if you should decide you want to take over some other area. Maybe, I didn't mean to say like that. If you wanted to expand and the other district agreed, that, that, that could be done if you both agreed.
Mr. Superintendent, do we get to have that conversation tonight? No?
No, we're voting on, no. So I'll entertain a motion to approve or disapprove learning community recommend, superintendent learning community recommendation for boundaries, which is presented before us.
Move to support the boundary recommendations set before us.
There's a motion to support the boundary recommendations by the superintendent that is before us by Mrs. Gadding.
Second.
Second by Ms. Williams. Any, any discussion? Seeing none, roll call.
Underwood?
Aye.
Vargas?
Aye.
Wayne?
No.
Williams?
Aye.
Fay?
No.
Gadding?
Aye.
America?
Aye.
Scanlon?
Aye.
Snow?
No.
Six aye, three no.
Motion carries. Moving to E1H, Learning Community Open Enrollment Student Movement Superintendent Recommendation, Mr. Evans?
President Wayne, I think the big, President Wayne, I think the big item here is that it moves transportation costs for open enrollment external to TOSA, which currently is one of the big cost factors for TOSA by adding that transportation in. So I think that's the biggest piece of it. It's essentially the same, open enrollment program, full funding for open enrollment transportation, but outside of TOSA.
There's a recommendation by superintendent to approve or disapprove the open enrollment student intent, student movement recommendation that is before us. Mr. Scanlon?
I guess I just have a question for clarification. Section three, we've got open enrollment student movement and then, which requires support or oppose. And then we go into some more with section four and five for transportation and open enrollment student transportation. Are those, how, could you explain exactly what, what's the difference and what we're voting on for one, one vote versus the other?
A lot of them are pretty similar. What happens is it just went down statutory lines. And so even though they're very similar, and some of them even reference the one in front of it, the statutory lines is why we wanted to give the legislature response to each statutory line with the learning community. But they're all pretty similar. There's slight change, like EH, E1H is open enrollment student movement, and then EHI, open enrollment with student achievement, because they have a factor in that to statutory language. And so it's very, very similar, it's just that piece added to it. And then learning community language for transportation for open enrollment, again, very similar. And again, our recommendations are very similar. Allow it to stay the same, but pay for the transportation external to TOSA. That actually is the, that's actually the recommendation for all of them, is keep it like it is, but take the funding for transportation outside of TOSA because that is a penalty for us. We, we are being penalized as a learning community. In fact, the state's saving approximately 3.2, 3.4 million a year on the learning community. That if it wasn't a learning community, that's how much more would be distributed to those 11 districts. So I think, I think that's probably the easiest way. Dennis, was, is there anything else? Is that kind of the quickest, quickest description of that?
That's correct, because all of these tie back to the transportation costs. You're transporting students to create the open enrollment environment, what's the additional cost? And they're simply saying, if you're going to work towards student demographics and changing that, if you're going to use transportation, that's okay, but pay for it. Don't, just let it fall back upon the districts.
Thank you for that clarification.
So would E1H hurt or help us in this particular case?
E1H would help because we're going to separate transportation costs from TOSA. So it's going to help us by providing more TOSA.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve, do we already have a motion? No, I entertain a motion to approve the open enrollment student movement recommendation.
I move to support the open enrollment student movement recommendation from the learning community superintendent's report.
There's a motion by Mr. Scanlon, is there a second?
Second.
Second by Ms. America. Any discussion? Mr. Snow?
I would just like to say that there's been some school districts that have been closed to this open enrollment, they've been at capacity. So voting yes for this doesn't change anything. Some of these school districts have been closed and they'll never open their doors. If we really want to talk about diversity and having kids move across different district lines, that's on a larger scale, and this doesn't really do anything, in my opinion. Thank you.
There is a bigger discussion to be had about that. However, in this case, this would reimburse OPS more money for people who we...